All right. I'm going to do the call to order, all right? It is now six fourteen. And the PM and the Beckett Planning Board's uh planning board's meeting will be called to order. All right. Agendas were posted online for anyone who wants them. This meeting is being held in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-eight and the bylaws of the town of Beckett. The decision to issue a special permit requires a minimum of four positive votes from the five member board. My name is Robert Ronzio. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Sitting to my left is Al Blake. Uh Al Blake is the uh a clerk pro tem. Sitting to my right is Ann Crowley. Ann Crowley is the clerk. Sitting opposite me is James Levy. James Levy is the good. James Levy? Yeah, that's fine. That's good. I got that. Okay. And that's the application. James Levy is the uh Vice Chair. Uh on why are on Zoom is Dr. Howard Werner. Um who is the what? There's only one.
Uh is there a letter of explanation? Oh, this well, this is just a put informal discussion.
Dr. Werner, who was the fifth member of the board. Um and Gail Lavelle.
Something about the company's letter of explanation.
All right, all right. Ann. Ann, you just have to wait, okay? Because you know, she's recording this and she's not going to be able to listen to three of our conversations. So Jessie, our um I don't know what the call. Administrative assistant, okay, who is here is taking care of the Zoom, the Zoom meeting. And I have to ask her one question. Um it has to do with uh can we, can we try to see if we can get Gail Lavelle one more time in?
She's in. I sent her the notification like five times. I accept it.
She's in. Oh, she's in. Okay, she's in. Okay, so so we're all in. All right. Um as Chair, it is my responsibility and the provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, to ask anyone in the uh if anyone in the audience is going to make a video or audio recording.
Yes, I am recording this. Thank you. Johnson, uh Country Journal.
Okay, Country Journal.
Barry Parnas.
Barry Parnas.
Thank you.
Yes, David Kong.
David Kong.
Kong. Anyone else?
Um yes, Nathan Hanford.
Okay. Nathan Hanford. All right, anyone else? Okay, so we'll move on. Additionally, under the same law, one one phone everybody, everyone that's in attendance, this person shall arrest the meeting without permission of the Chair. That all persons shall, at the request of the Chair, be silent. Anyone who is disruptive uh will be given clear warning. If they persist, they will be asked to leave, or what we'll do is we'll we'll warn you. Um and if you're on a second warning, if you happen to be on a Zoom call, you're going to be, you're going to be uh taken off, taken off or
Removed.
Removed from the, removed from the, from the meeting, all right? Um as far as proceedings today is not the intention of the board to prevent any individual from making comments during a public hearing because the board obviously needs information provided by the public um and questions raised by them, which will be in the best interest of the town as long as these comments are germane to the topic being discussed. In the interest of fairness, I will uh limit people to two to three minutes to make their point and may allow the same individual to speak again after everyone who wishes to speak has had his turn. If you spoke at last meeting, you don't get a chance to speak today, okay? And you may not get a chance to speak until when whenever uh the public input is concluded. Uh and then and at that point, we will allow, ask people to um to speak if they have something else to say. Right? If something has already been said, you may affirm it, right? But you may not take time to regurgitate what has already been said, all right? In the interest, in the interest, this meeting will go on forever. So that's where we are. The ground rules are very simple. For the record, state your name and address. Direct your comments and questions to the board. Be civil, be courteous, show respect, present the facts in appropriate language, or engaging in active debate with board members or others in attendees is not allowed and will not be tolerated. Okay, so let's take a look at the agenda that we have before us this evening. The agenda is very simple. Um there, the first item on the agenda, if I can find it, it's right here, is uh the call to order, which is done. Board to review and approve the minutes for uh March twenty-fourth and April twenty-first. But what do we do? Maybe I took. All right, she's going to print one, okay? Um what I would like to do is I would like to move that to the end of the meeting, so we can just so will somebody make a motion to uh um review, approve the minutes at the end of the meeting?
So.
Second, yeah, there is. Ann, Ann Crowley moved. Al Blake seconded. No, I am not hearing any further discussion. We will all call vote. Ann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ann.
What are you moving?
Uh we're moving, we're moving the minutes to the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, we just can't forget about this.
No, no, we won't forget about it, okay? I know, we're going to have to, right, okay. Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
James, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Werner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thanks.
Gail Lavelle, how do you vote? Not voting, standing. Bob Ronzio votes aye, unanimous. Um so we will move to the uh normally we would move to the old business, which is board to discuss future meeting attendance and uh the public hearing uh for Hit the Road. But uh we have one new business item which we can dispose of fairly quickly, which is the application for Timothy and Melissa Garway uh Garthway regarding their request for relief from section three point four point uh four subparade A for the Beckett zoning bylaws, public hearing. Uh it was tentatively scheduled for um wait a second, where's Jessie?
She had, she'll be back in a second.
All right. So we'll hang on, hang on for one minute until Jessie gets back. But what I'd like to do is have somebody, when Jessie gets back, I'd like to have somebody make a motion so that we can take up this business before uh we get into the board. Jessie, all right, we're ready to um since a special permit application is in, right? So we're, we're ready to, we're ready to address it. All right.
It's in, but it's not noticed, it's not, has not been noticed yet.
Oh, it has not been noticed? Oh, okay. All right, okay, so it's, so it's going to be noticed as of July?
No.
June, June eighth?
It it should be noticed in time for the mid-June meeting. It's not noticed yet.
All right, okay, it'll be noticed in time for the June meeting. All right. Um all right. Is Garth, Melissa?
Doing the, I'm not doing the notifications anymore.
No, I know, I know you're not. Okay. I know, Al and I have taken lessons on that, we're going to have to do that. All right, is uh is Timothy and Melissa here?
Yes, sir, we're here.
Yep.
Okay, sir, um this will be an informal discussion. Um would you please just approach the board and tell us what your plans are?
Um as of yesterday, Chairman, at fourteen eighteen, we received notice that deed was recorded on the property thirty-two Williams Road in Beckett. And after taking possession of that, we would like to uh put an addition on the back end of that one-bedroom, one-bath cabin to extend twelve feet to the rear.
I know what this is, okay.
The last we spoke, I believe, was January?
Yes.
And we have had our survey completed. And that is part that should be on file with the town. And that shows that we have uh we're in compliance with all setbacks.
Okay.
So we are looking to take this property of point three eight acres uh with the existing building and just extend the area of the building twelve feet back or approximately three hundred and ninety-six feet.
Okay, so um a three guys under three point four point three, three or four. It's a non-conforming, single residential structure. Um you're going to extend it. The alteration to change uh is the structure is to be located on a lot of insufficient area and size with all current setback yard building coverage and building height requirements. Um I looked at the, I I I looked at the plan that came in. Um what we'll do is we, at the, at the formal, formal meeting that will be held in June, um it will, we will re-present this to the board and we will go ahead and have a discussion about um approving or disapproving the plan. Um so this, that, we're, what it looks like we're ready to go. All we need to do is send out a list to the abutters um over the property and they will have, and they will be noticed directly. We'll send out notices to the town and we'll say the adjac- the uh adjacent towns and we'll send out notifications to all departments and commissions, et cetera, in the town of Beckett. And they will have a chance to respond um within thirty-five days of the receipt of that, okay? Hopefully that will be before the, the actual hearing day. Uh just so that everybody knows that if uh if in fact they don't respond, that's considered to be tacit approved. And so we will deal with it, you know, when, when you formally come before the board in June. Do you understand everything that I just said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Then uh what we're going to do is we'll let you conclude this. Um and uh we're going to move back to
So just need to, oh, just one point. Let me update the book and page on their application. I can send them the correction. We'll just have to confirm it in email because I know they're out of state.
Okay, did you hear what Jessie said?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay, Jessie, Jessie is going to need the new book and page number. And so she will send you uh an email to let you know, and then you just have to email it back to her so we can make the corrections.
Oh, very good, understood.
Okay. Okay, Jessie?
Yep.
All right, so that concludes uh, this wasn't really uh a special permit hearing. This was just an informal discussion. Thank you very much, sir. And what we're going to do now is we're going to move back from item four back to item three. Uh item three the board to discuss future meeting attendance requirements. Do you want to do that right now?
I think we could wait also.
All right, then make a motion.
Uh I make a motion that we delay discussing three A until the end of the meeting.
Until the end of the meeting. Al seconded, motion made and seconded. Do we have a I have any discussion hearing now. I'm going to call for the vote. Ann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um Ann votes aye. Uh James, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Uh Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
Howard, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Bob Ronzio votes aye. Okay, so that's moved to the end of the meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing. And Jessie who you, what we need on the application is the change. It's not Lynch.
We need a name, not a, not a organization.
We need a name, not an organization. So we have to make a correction on, on the application, okay? Lynch Crimmo is not, you know, is not part of, well, I he's, he's not, he's not uh directly associated with Hit the Road, R V L L C. Uh who is Jessie?
I was letting people in.
Okay, who, who, who's, who's the, who's the principal for H T uh?
Well, uh Jeff, Jeff Lynch is uh of Lynch and Scrimmo, we've been dealing with.
I know, but yeah, we need Jeff's name.
Uh you, you can enter as Daniel Weinstein as a principal member of H T Art.
Well, remember, that's what, that's what's going to be on the application.
Dan Weinstein on behalf of Hit the Road?
Yes.
Okay, someone's going to need to make that correction now also.
So if you can, if you can just send us a notice uh to the planning board um that, you know, to make that, you know, that that's the change that you want made on the, on the application, we will, I'll put that in there.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, so um let's see, taking care of that. Um they're seeking relief from three, uh three point one point three, the Beckett zoning bylaws to re-establishing uh Dreamway Restaurants and establish a limited facility at thirteen forty-two County Road. Um map four oh one, lots three and four. Uh so where, where, where we, where we were at at the last meeting is that we were a public participation. We have a list of uh the participants who spoke at the last meeting. And uh we have a list of people who are going to speak at this meeting. All right, so Je- Jessie, that's this list, right?
That's this list. You can put it in whatever order you want, but that's the list.
Okay, and was it Barbara Lifton?
Barbara Lifton was two, she was, she was the only one, she was the only one you can't change. She's the only one you can't change.
Okay, so Barbara, are you there?
I am.
All right, uh Barbara, you've got roughly three minutes, you know, we're we're not going to hold you to exactly just three minutes, but we, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, please don't. I have very short prepared remarks and they're four to five minutes. Um Chairman Ronzio and members of the board, my name is Barbara Lifton, and I recently purchased a home at four seventy-three County Road. I plan to spend much of my life savings renovating this home and retire here in Beckett. I'm a single mom to an intellectually disabled young man and two dogs. We love the serenity of Beckett and our wonderful new neighbors. But something has happened since I bought my cottage on Yocum Brook. A multi-billion dollar corporation, the Davis Companies, has decided that Beckett needs a glamping resort. Did they come here out of concern for Beckett and its lack of hotels? Or did they come here to make millions more dollars? I think we know the answer. I listened carefully to the applicant's lawyer and their team of developers. I heard them say the word camping many, many times, but calling something camping doesn't make it so. They want to put up one hundred fixed cabins and tents, a visitor center, a tavern with a lounge, an amphitheater, a pool, saunas, hot tubs, a store, a trash building, a laundry building, a parking lot, and artificial lighting. Whether the Dreamaway would even be reopened at all or open to the public as it was remains yet to be seen, as it's not included in the development plan, which is before the board. In their application, the developer claims that the now-closed Dreamaway would benefit from having a place for diners to stay overnight. The Dreamaway at most could accommodate a hundred and twenty diners. The proposed resort is designed to accommodate four hundred resort guests. The developers claim, without any evidence, that there will be minimal traffic from these four hundred guests because they will all stay in the resort and eat at the Dreamaway, even though it will often be closed for private functions. They also claim that the Dreamaway will be open to the public, bringing even more cars to the area, but that hundreds more cars will not affect the character of the neighborhood. Words matter, and this board needs to carefully consider all of the words in the application. Many of the words I heard last month did not match the words in the application, but here's what I did hear. There will be fifty fixed cabins and fifty fixed tents. There will be heat, linen service, and private bathrooms. Guests will not be permitted to make their own campfires or to cook a meal, but they will have the ability to boil water. This, by any stretch of the imagination, is not camping. Words matter. This is a hotel or motel at best, but in reality, it's much more akin to a subdivision of one hundred new dwellings for transients who are willing to pay upwards of three hundred dollars a night to stay there. This is not camping. This board must consider each of the criteria set forth in the zoning bylaw, but I want to focus on two of these factors, the character of the neighborhood and traffic safety. The character of County Road today is quiet and peaceful. The applicant's own traffic study showed zero cars coming and going on County Road. This speaks volumes about the character of the neighborhood. The addition of one hundred to as many as four hundred cars per day, not including Dreamaway traffic and staff, will irrevocably alter the character of this neighborhood, a neighborhood where people walk, bike, and jog up and down the street all day long. A street with no sidewalks, no streetlights, and no traffic signals. Guests to this resort will make several trips in and out per day, first to check in and then to shop for provisions. They will go off to see the many sights of the Berkshires. They'll return to shower before they go back out to one of the area's many wonderful restaurants, whether Tanglewood, Jacob's Pillow, or a local theater. No, they will not all dine at the Dreamaway, as the application states, because the Dreamaway couldn't possibly fit them all, even if they turned the tables three times a night. Also, if they're visiting for multiple nights, it's very unlikely they'll want to eat at the same restaurant multiple times. Contrary to the words of the application, resort guests will be coming and going all day and evening long. On almost each and every one of these trips in and out, unless they are going into Beckett, they will have to navigate the hairpin turn at County Road and Yocumpon Road, which happens to be directly in front of my house. This turn is approximately three hundred and forty degrees. It's at a three-way intersection where cars will be coming and going from six different directions, again, directly in front of my house. This intersection has no traffic signals. It's easy to miss. Cars will be slamming on the brakes when they miss the turn or cut one another off or fail to yield, and there will be accidents. People who miss the turn will be looking for a place to turn around, and the first place they'll see is my U-shaped driveway. This traffic nightmare will endanger the safety of me, my family, my neighbors, resort guests, and you. It will destroy the peace and quiet of North Beckett that we all came here for. It will cost the town money for increased police and rescue services. It purports to serve a need we didn't even know we had, and it will bring zero net revenue to the town. Meals tax and rooms tax are paid to the state, not to the town. If the town does pass an occupancy tax, those revenues will be offset by the increased need for services and road repair. When the town tries to assess the newly-built resort and raise the property tax, the developer will seek a tax abatement year after year, costing us more money. And the character of our neighborhood and our town will be forever changed. So I urge you to think carefully if the net benefit to Beckett outweighs all of the many harms that will come with this resort development. Thank you.
All right, um Barbara, have you uh, you said you had prepared remarks. Have you sent those remarks to the, to the planning board?
I sent a written opposition, and what I just read is a short summary of them. I don't think I said anything new, but I can send these remarks.
Well, I would appreciate it. I mean, if it's written down, it's, it's, it's much easier for us to look, to look at, look at it, you know? Uh we may maybe, we, we probably won't be making a decision for uh several months. And so we don't want to lose, you know, what you said. If it's memorialized in writing, then we'll have it.
Happily.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, the next person to speak.
Uh but I just want to add, I forgot to write Will, Will Rogers' name on the list. He, he requested a
I'm putting it, I'm putting him down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next person, Barry Dikter. Did I say that right? Barry? Are you there, Barry?
I, I am here. And I am going to uh defer and uh speaking until I see a revised application and we know what the applicant actually intends to do. Um so um you have my two written oppositions. The current application, as it, as it stands, as it's written, could not be approved because of the violation of the zoning bylaws. So I'd like to speak once the applicant has submitted a revised application.
All right, sir, you're, we will, we, we will definitely accommodate you. That may be in a while, okay? All right, next up, um Amy Promutter. Amy, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Um, thank you. I did submit written comments and um so I'll, I'll just try to be brief and just touch on some of these, but you know, I, this has ca- caused quite a stir in town, and I find it really sad. I know friendships have been lost over this and you know, while there are certainly some um you know, some, some things to be concerned about, I just, it would be nice if people could be more neighborly about it. But you know, for me, I, I think the idea of a campground, even a glampground, is not a bad one. What really concerns me the most about this is the scale of it, and I'm guessing that if the scale were cut back, um you'd see some of the opposition gone, but I agree that the the traffic study looked at the impact on other cars near the Dreamaway. It didn't look at the impact on people walking or riding or on animals and wildlife. Um I'm concerned, I know that the Hit the Road had talked about um the, the lighting plan being in compliance with the International Dark Skies Association, and I provided some comments about how it's not, so you know, I'd like to see that addressed. I'm concerned about some of the materials used in sight, so tents, um depending on what the fabric is, waterproof fabrics contain PFAS. I don't, I'm I work in the environmental field. I'm not an expert in every material, but I would be very concerned about that leaching out into the water and so um and I'd be concerned about pesticides, you know, our, our town bird is the black fly. Um and uh, you know, so I would want to make sure that pesticides are, are put to a minimum. I think a lot of these things can be addressed through a permit process. Um but, and I also would hope that if it were scaled down to something you know more in line with the neighborhood, that that would be helpful. Thank you.
Well, Amy, thank you very much. Okay, um as far as the PFAS is concerned, uh I also serve on the, on the uh border health. And uh, you know, we're very concerned about, you know, bringing any of that material into Beckett. Uh you know, we've, we've for uh the state, the state of Massachusetts and the University of Massachusetts have discussed that issue uh with the town and with the border health. Um and we haven't been able to identify uh any, any uh in any wells, because that's where we primarily were looking. Um because we don't have a lot of industry uh in town, and the industry that was huge, the primary industry that was here, uh most of it's gone, so uh yeah, we're very concerned about that. As far, the other thing is, is as far as mosquito spraying and things of that nature, the town of Beckett um has been opposed to spraying, at least that, that insect. Um and I, I don't see the board changing their stance on that anytime soon.
So I'll just add that a lot of the um, the pesticides that are sprayed do contain PFAS because it makes them waterproof. And I know, you know, I see signs all around town for Mo Shield, which claims to only, you know, uh kill um mosquitoes and ticks, and there's nothing that exists that only kills mosquitoes and ticks. So I would just encourage the planning board to make this a requirement of the permit that no pesticides will be used.
Thank you very much. You're absolutely correct about, about you know, not, and these sprays not affecting, you know, being limited to just one or two, one or two uh species. All right, thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is Pasquale Pat Crispo. Sir, are you there?
He was.
Well, he could be on another page. I mean, we've we'll come back.
Mr. Ronzio?
Yes, sir.
Ronzio, uh can I just uh
Who is this?
To, to make sure that
Who is?
This is Jeff Lynch?
Jeff Lynch. Yeah, all right, Jeff, okay. Uh what do we, all right, make it brief.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking for, make sure that we get the addresses of the speakers. I don't think Ms. Promutter provided her.
Barbara Lifton, Andy, uh what's your address?
Seventy-nine Leonhart Road.
Thank you.
That one on earlier.
Okay, Pasquale. Pat Crispo, are you there, sir?
Don't see him anymore.
All right, if you come back, we'll put you back on the list. Next up is Daniel Osman.
Wait, 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 you two.
Wait a minute, Chris, who?
Pat?
You found, uh you found Pat Crispo?
He's on, he didn't, you have to take yourself off mute, Pat.
Can we find Pat?
He's, he's on here, I just saw him.
Pat, take yourself off mute.
You have the ability, if you're, if you're on Zoom, on the Zoom call, you have the ability to take yourself off mute.
Did we lose him?
I think he might have just hit the wrong button. No, no, there is.
Is that him?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't see him on the screen.
I don't either.
No. I see him on the screen.
It's not working. His, it's just, he's, he's
All right, what we'll do is, I don't want to, I don't want to waste a lot of time looking for him. We'll come back.
Go back, yeah.
All right, Daniel Osman. All right, Daniel Osman. Osman, sorry.
Right, hi, thank you. My name is Daniel Osman. Yes, thirteen forty-two County Road. I am the current owner of the Dreamaway Lodge in question. Thank you very much. And I would also actually like to change, to move my, my speaking time to a future spot. I have, I submitted something in writing as requested last month. I submitted a short addendum this month. Anyone who's interested can read my stuff there, and I would prefer to save my comments for another time. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay. Next up on the.
Oh, Daniel.
Agenda is Kenneth Cheeseman.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Thank you so much, Chairman Ronzio. My name's Ken Cheeseman. I live at one one two three County Road in Beckett. Much of what Barbara Liffman mentioned, sort of, I don't want to regurgitate, as you said. So I'm just going to go over a couple of concerns that I have that are specifically related to some of the issues. I do find that this distinction between glamping and camping does become important because glamping, much like something like, you know, it's no more camping than Bitcoin is putting your money in the bank, or Uber is taking a taxi, or Airbnb is taking a hotel room. It's something new, it's trending. It's been the hottest growth area in the hospitality industry during the pandemic. Whether it will last and keep going is a question that I have, so that's one concern. Next one is that, one of the reasons why it's so popular for investors is that you can start a glamping resort and not meet many of the fire and safety regulations that an actual hotel would have while charging the same prices that a luxury hotel room would cost people. For example, the Federal Hotel Fire and Safety Act of nineteen ninety would require a one hundred-room hotel to have a sprinkler system, and a hardwired smoke detector in each room, and an evacuation plan, and a variety of other safety measures that a campground does not require. In HTR's proposal, for example, no mention is made of smoke detectors, except in the office building being built, and I'm curious whether there will be hardwired smoke detectors in each of these units. Another thing is that the HTR's single-page website says that they're mostly interested in repurposing old RV parks, and they have an acquisition criteria of a hundred and fifty-plus units. This proposal, however, is not a repurposing. This is taking forty-eight acres of forest that has been untouched for eighty years, clearing nineteen point two acres of it, and building a whole new resort. Now, of course, the proposal touts their good environmental stewardship, that they're going to plant a thousand trees, et cetera. But let's really take a look at this. The town of Beckett is making efforts to be more carbon neutral. We're installing electric charging stations at Town Hall, improving energy efficiency of our town buildings, even considering a wind turbine. And a wind turbine would offset as much as six metric tons of carbon per year, which is an admirable, admirable amount, and I believe in that. But each acre of this forest that will be removed sequesters a hundred and sixty metric tons of carbon. It's going to take a lot of wind turbines and a lot of charging stations to make up for that loss, and I think that's something we need to consider. Also, that one thousand trees that they're going to plant, an acre of New England forest like this contains forty-eight hundred trees per acre. Now, in two thousand twenty-two, it sometimes makes sense, more economic sense and ecological sense, to not randomly clear our forests. If you've had dinner at the Dreamaway Lodge, you've probably had a picture of that nice fresh ice water comes straight out of the ground, no filters, perfect. We sit atop one of the best watersheds in the nation. HTR's proposal says they'll use ninety-nine hundred gallons of water per day. I challenge that estimate. I recommend that the planning board take the time to at least input the information from HTR's proposal into the Hotel Water Measurement Initiative methodology. I have sent that to you and included in a recent email to you, the link to do that. You will find, as I did, that ninety-nine hundred gallons per day is woefully underestimated. But even at their estimate of ten thousand gallons per day, that is twenty-seven million gallons of that clean water that we get up here that will only return some of it as wastewater that will take decades to return to the aquifer. But no part of the proposal was more inadequate to me than the traffic study, and it's going to be talked about a lot, I am sure. But the biggest omission for me, as somebody who uses a bicycle to commute everywhere, who is now sixty-seven years of age and uses my constitutional daily walks and bike rides to maintain my health and sense of well-being, and I am not alone. There are so many people on County Road, on Yokampan Road, people in their nineties who I see walking on Yokampan Road, people walking up County Road, riding their bikes, their e-bikes. This is an entryway into October Mountain State Forest. There are cyclists on this road all the time. It's a narrow road, its sightlines are bad. At this hour of the day, if I were to go stand out on that road, I can't even see down the road because the sun is setting. When the Dreamaway is open on a Friday or a Saturday night in the summer, I don't take a bike ride, I don't take a walk on the road because there's just too much traffic and it's too dangerous. And when they say it's going to be just as much traffic as the Dreamaway had, we're not going to want to get out on that road, and it does affect people's health, especially if that's their way of getting exercise. Also, Beckett Road and Yokampan Road, the roads that people will use to access to get here, take a look at those brand-new guardrails that were recently put in. How many times have they already had to replace some of those? So again, that's a road that people actually bike up, even though my wife says to me, who would want to? People like me do, and it's a challenge hill. Bike riders from all over Berkshire's come to it. Increasing traffic during the summer on these roads is something to seriously consider. I also suggest that the planning board check the Beckett Police blotter to see how many complaints have been made about traffic going in and out of the forest. No mention has been made of the, the road that goes west into the forest. Believe it or not, people use that as a throughway, sometimes to get to the Dreamaway, or just to shoot up and down County Road. And there have been serious accidents on County Road, including a fatality in two thousand and three. So I think all of those things have to be taken into consideration, and I seriously hope that people do not consider using or encouraging the use of that dirt road through the forest to get to this new Dreamaway Resort because you will destroy a valued stretch of forest to everyone. Now, one thing that has been said.
You're, you've been going on. I mean, can you summarize what you're?
Yes, I'm about to summarize, Chairman Ronzio, thank you. I know that people have said this has been divisive, but actually, I've been impressed at how unified my neighbors have been on County Road, from lifelong residents to new residents, all united in what they value about living here. And many of us are older residents, and we may not be here in another decade or so. So for many of us, this is about what we will leave behind. And what we want to leave behind, yes, we want to create employment and opportunities for Beckett residents, but we would like to leave the next generation an intact natural environment, our natural resources, and the rural character of our neighborhood, which we override low-paying service jobs at a resort. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is Dennis Thomas. Dennis, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Dennis, are you prepared to speak?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, then fine, you have the floor.
I have to shut off the video to conserve bandwidth, or I'll lose this connection. So here I go. Stop video. Okay. Good evening, fellow townspeople. It's nice to see you. And I had to turn.
I need an address.
Okay, Dennis Thomas, twelve thirty County Road, Beckett. And I abut the Dreamaway property.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Well, thank you. Okay. So like I said, you have, and I abut the Dreamaway with approximately eighteen hundred-foot border. I first lived here on County Road from seventy-four to seventy-seven, and I was fortunate to sing Bebopalula with Bob Dylan, Alan Guthrie, and the Roland Thunder Review at Dreamaway. I moved off the mountain to follow my work, but in two thousand and one bought these ten acres, built a cabin up back, and then a house. And in two thousand and four, I received my certificate of occupancy in two thousand and five. And I retired here in two thousand and ten. This was a fulfillment of a dream I had since nineteen sixty-nine when I first visited this area after a tour in the Navy, where I was recommended for reenlistment. I live a simple life with no TV, no microwave. I go to bed around nine, get up around six. I like to hike and bike and kayak and snowshoe and cross-country ski. I try to live in harmony with my fellow creatures, and I value wildlife habitat. People visiting here in large numbers will unwittingly destroy that which they came to enjoy. Peace and quiet. It gets interrupted by people's natural proclivity to have fun, have a good time, talk about whatever, and, and make music. Hiking trails and small lakes are impacted because of limited parking. Additional traffic is guaranteed. Curvy mountain roads can be treacherous to anybody not familiar. The character of the neighborhood has altered for me personally. This glamping facility is in my backyard. What is being proposed will irreversibly change where I live. Life inside my house will be a whole new experience. This change will be permanent. Walking on the road or bicycling will be very different. Sleeping in my cabin will no longer offer peace and quiet. My neighbors are of the same mind as me, and that's the same mind as the town of Hinsdale, which recently shut down a similar proposal. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I believe in being precise and concise. God bless you all. May we continue with an attitude of mutual respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay.
Pat Crispo has his hand up. I think he might be. His technical problems might be over, I'm not sure.
Hello?
Pat.
Pat, Chris Paul, are you there, sir?
Yep, yes, I'm here.
Okay, well, we.
That, that was Dennis Thomas that answered. We're looking for Pat Crispo.
Pat Crispo, are you there?
Yeah, I think he's coming back, he's coming back. You can see him in the corner.
There he is. Okay, fine. Pat, we didn't hear from you, and so we'll come, we'll come back to you right now. You have the floor, sir. Are you prepared? Hello?
Pat, can you, can you go to your computer and take off mute?
Pat, we can't hear you. We can see you, but we can't hear you. You need to unmute yourself.
Maybe let him know that the mute is to the left-hand corner in the bottom of your screen, sir.
Oh, did you hear that? Did you hear that, Pat?
Put him to the later.
All right, Pat.
Bob's next, Bob Hirsch.
Bob Hirsch, you're next, sir. You have the floor.
Okay.
Address.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Thank you, Chairman. I was listening to what Dennis had said before about dreams.
Address, address.
Point, I'm sorry, Bob Hirsch, four ninety-two County Road. I'm at the same intersection as Barbara, and it's a white house that we bought in, in nineteen eighty-nine, after years of saving for a place where we could get away from people and grow our own vegetables, and we have a great life up here. We love the people, we love the town, and we love this area. And I wanted to just talk for a second about the, the traffic situation. I, I wish the board would consider the busiest case traffic scenario and not follow the applicant's traffic study that was done in mid-November and an early morning, but a scenario of a spring, summer, or fall when we would, when it would be very, very busy. And the applicant's planning a parking facility of a hundred and sixty cars. Consider, if you will, the traffic impact of that many cars. On a busy period, they could be at full capacity. Each car would both arrive and depart. So that's three hundred and twenty travel legs, a hundred and sixty going, a hundred and sixty coming. Many attraction, many of these cars would probably travel during this state to visit Berkshire attractions and utilize, you know, roads again. If only half of those cars went back and forth, that would be eighty legs or a hundred and sixty travel legs. Add that to the original three twenty, and on a particular summer week, you could get four hundred and eighty trips to and from. The reason I think this is so serious is that the roads are, are, they're not easy roads here. If you picture the road that comes up from Route twenty, the hill, the major hill, then as it, it levels out, goes around many different curves. And then, of course, you have the hairpin turn, which is right across from my house. All the headlights shine into our, our bedrooms. But you, you also have then going up County Road, and you have all these cars going back and forth. There are people walking, running, bicycling, as, as has already been mentioned. I think this doesn't even mention the people who are going to dine at the Dreamaway. I also would like to say that those people who, and I'm sure you all know this, that from Route twenty to Route eight has become, I think it's a GPS phenomena, has become a very, very busy road with people going up and down all the time. I've actually counted at four o'clock in the afternoon, every two minutes, every one, one and a half minutes, a car coming. So that's all additive. And I just want to please ask the board to consider this and keep our, our dream place a dream. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, sir. All right. And we have spoken about that hairpin turn, you know, we, it's been mentioned several times. And I'm sure the board is very, very concerned about maybe having, if, if, if something were to be done with this project, that that intersection would have to be somehow changed. But at this point in time, what we're going to do is we're going to move on to Rosemarie.
Juan Giovanni.
Juan Giovanni, okay? Are you there, ma'am?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Ronzio and members of the board, even after approximately five hundred signatures.
Address, I'm going to keep.
Hey, I'm sorry about that. Eight oh six County Road, here in Beckett.
Eight oh six County Road.
Yeah, okay, even after approximately five hundred signatures against the glamping project, and almost the entire County Road in Yokampan Neighborhood folks writing letters telling why they don't feel a product yet, just write for the neighborhood, no one seemed to be listening, especially the board members voted in by the same neighborhood folks. Could their consideration be just about revenue? We hope not because we need to watch out for all the people in the neighborhood. I feel that there has not been enough formal study done to the traffic study. Now, what's special about this is that my grandparents, Maria and. Now, what's special about this is that my grandparents, Maria and Vincenzo Frasca, started, owned, and operated the Dreamaway Lodge for fifty years. That was in May through October was their season. I grew up there and worked there, so I know how busy things were and weren't. Those who are saying there would hardly be any difference in the traffic are very wrong. The busy traffic times were the weekends plus an added music night. The lodge was not busy during the week, during the day, at all, some nights as well. It was pretty much the same when Mr. Osman operated the lodge. So heavy traffic all of the time was never an issue before. This enormous glamping project is boasting four hundred people day in and day out, three seasons of the year. We're talking glampers active and ready to shop, go out to dinner, tango with, et cetera. Our neighborhood would be no more. And additionally, it is my understanding that the planning board voted in the existing bylaws many years ago requiring two-acre building lots and nothing less. They should live by that law. That decision was made with good intent and should not be changed for any reason. No exceptions. There are million-dollar houses being built here. Why? For the peace and the privacy. We hope to keep things that way. Thank you, Chairman Ronzio and the board. I appreciate the time.
Well, thank you, Rosemarie. Okay, what we're going to do now is we're going to move on to Stella Ting. Stella, are you there?
Yes. Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Address, please.
I live... My name is Stella Ting, and I live at Fourteen Donald Drive, corner of Yocumponne Road. And I'm speaking in opposition to the application for a special permit by Hit the Road. My husband and I first visited Beckett as house guests of a work friend who lives in Beckett on Yocumponne Road. And we were so taken by the quiet rural character of Beckett and the beautiful Yocumponne that we asked whether there were lots available for purchase. And we bought our parcel from the family who developed the neighborhood as a residential community. It used to be a former camp. It used to be a camp. This was more than thirty years ago, before we had children. When our daughters were old enough to go to sleepaway camp, they went to the white camp in Beckett, chimney corners. And they enjoyed the rustic experience so much that they returned every year until they themselves became counselors. And to this day, as they get older and were able to drive, they invited friends to come to the house. We use the house year-round. And one of their favorite activities is going to the quarry, the historic quarry, where they can hike. And we supported maintaining the quarry as a nature preserve, as opposed to keeping it... As opposed to keeping it as a commercial operation. And some of the same concerns were concerns at the time regarding the quarry. Increased traffic, which posed dangers to people in the community, pedestrians, and also the increased damage that would result from heavy trucks going on Yocumponne Roads. So my concern is the impact of the environment, impact of the development on the natural environment, as well as the wildlife habitat, and the burdens on the town's volunteer fire and ambulance departments. And as a resident of Yocumponne Road, I'm especially concerned about the impact of increased road traffic on Yocumponne Road, which was not even considered by the applicant. As previously mentioned, there are pedestrians, joggers, dog walkers, cyclists. Then there's on the road, there is no shoulder, no sidewalk, no traffic lights or nightlights to light that road. Yocumponne Road is our main access to our community areas, which include the tennis courts and the main dock on Yocumponne. And we can only access it by foot. And the other... The only way for us to access Buckley Dunn Reservoir and nearby roads is also by walking Yocumponne Road. Speeding is already a concern on our road. There are posted signs regarding watching out for pedestrians and hidden driveways. So those are the main concerns that we have regarding the deficiencies of the traffic study, which didn't even consider those... Even consider our road. In conclusion, I just want to say that the proposed development will change the character of the town and also cause damage to the roads. As you know, the roads are in constant need of repair. They deteriorate very quickly. And I will no longer be living on a rural road, but on a very busy thoroughfare. So for these reasons, I request and urge the planning board to deny HTR's application for the special permit. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Stella. Stella, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you for your address again because I wrote something else down, I think.
It's Fourteen Donald Road, Donald Drive, which is a private road in our community, and I'm at the corner of Yocumponne Road.
Honor?
Donald.
Donald. Oh, Donald. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. I know where it is. Thank you.
And I also did submit a written statement to the board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Michael. Zwig. Is that how you say it? I'm sorry. I really...
No, it's... I accept however you say it, but it's actually pronounced "Zwig", but thank you for recognizing me.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. I have a home on Thirty-six Amy Court, which is just off Yocumponne Road, where I live with my wife, Michelle, and I've lived there for over thirty-five years. And I can say that Beckett is the place where my heart and my soul reside as well. As you've heard from many of my neighbors, I think that this proposed glamping resort is going to bring many adverse impacts to the neighborhoods in Beckett that will most be affected by it. That's North Beckett and Yocumponne. These two neighborhoods were identified as discrete neighborhoods in the recent open space survey circulated to all of us by the town. Virtually all of the traffic to the proposed glamping resort will go through these two neighborhoods and essentially all be funneled onto Yocumponne Road and County Road. We've all heard our neighbors' concerns, and their deep and sincere concerns about the traffic. I'm not going to reiterate it because there's nothing more I can say specifically about that that they've not already said. But I do think that there are two compelling reasons why this board respectfully should deny the application for a special permit that is before it. First, as we have said, the applicant and the application does not comply with the current Beckett zoning bylaws because this is not a camping ground by any stretch of the imagination. And second, and importantly, we're able to get past that threshold issue, the many adverse effects that this massive project will have on the community will far outweigh any of the benefits, and they are speculative benefits, that the project might bring. Let me speak personally for one moment. I have two young grandsons, and part of our summertime activity involves our walking together, hand in hand, down what is now, at most hours of the day, a relatively quiet Yocumponne Road, often to the reservoir. Even now, we do it very carefully, and we try to stay at the side of the road. But there are parts of the road that we walk on that have no shoulder. There's no side to the road, only a guardrail. So when we pass that, we are somewhat forced onto the road. Almost always, cars move respectfully and carefully to the center of the road, then move back to their lane of traffic. However, it does cause obviously some disruption. And when there's too much traffic, and especially oncoming traffic, there can be a safety issue. When you're talking about adding the number of vehicle trips as a result of this four hundred personal glamping resort that this will bring into the middle of a residential area, it's a serious problem. It's going to threaten how all of us live on Yocumponne Road and, as our neighbors have said, how they live on County Road. It's the street that we travel with by foot. It's where we socialize. And I know that one of the things that this planning board will consider is not only the impact on neighborhood, but also social structures. That's how I often meet and talk with my neighbors outdoors. And this site is going to sow... This proposed glamping resort will so greatly increase the traffic. It's going to change that. And for me, I can't accept the happy talk that I've heard from some that traffic volume will not be so bad. It won't be so increased. Let's see it with our own eyes. It just doesn't make sense for us to be told that traffic won't be exactly what we fear it will be, a massive increase. And after all, how can this applicant say what it said about how glamping resort guests will behave when it itself does not have any track record? Who is HTR? Who are the Davis Companies? Have they ever operated a site like this, much less one in the Berkshires? I believe the answer to be no. I don't think we can trust what's in the application. I would urge that this planning board, please, please, conduct independent studies, require that independent studies be conducted. For example, with respect to the vulnerability of users. And that is one of the criteria that now is used in assessing planning developments. There are many things that need to be studied. They include water. They include fire, as well as traffic. And I urge the planning board to require this information before this application proceeds. And I believe that it should not proceed any further because others have said this application is incomplete and insufficient on its face. On its face, it includes what is on its... Clearly, a zoning bylaw violation. Fifty trailers originally proposed. Now we're told, well, no, we're not actually going to have trailers. We'll just have cabins. Well, in order for the people of this town, for the planning board, to really assess what this application consists of, I urge that a new application be required to be submitted by this applicant. I just want to say one other thing. Nothing in the application submitted by HTR has anything remotely resembling a mitigation plan for any of the many adverse effects that this project will bring. That's what good planning should require. It's not there. And I don't think this can be dealt with by the applicant saying, well, we'll pare the project down and somehow that these impacts will be less impactful upon neighbors who live next door, like Mr. Thomas and others, the neighbors who live on County Road, and the neighbors who live on Yocumponne Road. I very much thank the planning board for its attention.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a Nan and Alan. I need to know who you are. I'm guessing Alan Lipton. I don't know. Could you let me know who you are or rename yourselves as first and last names, please?
Nan and Alan Lipton are here. What are you asking? I'm sorry.
I just need to rename you because we can't have first names.
You what?
I need to rename you. I need first and last names. It's just Nan and Alan, so I'm... Thank you.
Nancy Lipton and Alan Lipton, L-I-P-T-O-N.
All right. Just, I hate to do this, but James has requested that we take a little break here. He needs to go to the bathroom, so rather than I have him leave the room and not hear something.
I see you didn't sign in. Okay.
Thank you for letting me know. Thank you.
I'm still here.
Thanks, Howard. Thank you, Howard. All right, so... I've got the whole list here. It's now seven... Well, I've got... Okay, how many more? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Fourteen. Count one maybe. What if somebody...
Oh, fourteen, right. What?
If somebody isn't on the list, then we have time, or maybe yours?
Oh, they'll be added to the list, okay? But, you know, I mean... Some of these presentations, and I understand, you know, how everybody feels about this particular project. But, you know, we need to summarize, you know, the information. I mean, if you... Again, I encourage those people who've spoken very eloquently this evening that if you haven't put into writing what you've actually said here tonight, it probably would be a good idea to do that and get it to the board because it looks like we're going to be listening to lots of testimony. Unfortunately, we're hearing a lot of the same themes, okay? I mean, generally, what we're hearing is such things as the traffic study that was done for this particular project and how many people feel that it needs to be... It would need to be redone at a better time during the year and would take into consideration a number of the factors that were brought up here tonight. So, you know, that's probably going to be something that we'll have to discuss, you know, as we move forward with this. And of course, the change in the application. I mean, you know, the application that was originally submitted did speak to the issue of having trailers, and I guess the applicant didn't look at our bylaws or overlooked in our bylaws the fact that trailers are not allowed in the town of Beckett. And I would like to emphasize to many of the people who are speaking here, we have lots of people in Beckett who have trailers on their property. And you can have a trailer as long as it's registered. You just can't have people come stay in it.
Well, it has to be... It can't be on a vacant lot.
It can't be on a vacant lot, even if you have a house and your friends, your relatives come up and they decide they're going to stay in the trailer. That's not legal in the town of Beckett. And it happens all day long, especially during the summer. All right? In every community. Okay, okay. Next one. I'm sorry. I didn't realize changing back. All right, next up is Brian Horan.
No, Paula.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I'm sorry. I skipped. Paula. Sorry. Paula Langton.
Thank you.
Just give us your address, Paula.
I will. I have a house. My name's Paula Langton. I have a house on one-one-two-three County Road. And I'm not sure what more I have to offer or if I have anything new to... that will move the board to take the concerns of the people of Beckett to heart before approving a plan of this scope and scale. But I do appreciate the opportunity to be heard. I am a full-time Beckett resident. I fell in love with the neighborhood. I bought my place from Rosemarie Bon Giovanni, Mama Frasca's old place on County Road, about a quarter of a mile down the road from the Dreamaway Lodge, twenty-two years ago. I have considered Daniel Osman a friend. We met over thirty years ago as young actors at Shakespeare and Company in Lennox. I have been an enthusiastic supporter of the Dreamaway for years, and I want very much for the place to sell. I want Beckett businesses to thrive. I will admit, I was in support of the sale to Hit the Road investors until I looked at the proposal in more detail and listened to the concerns of my neighbors, particularly those on County Road, when I realized the full scale of this project... When I realized the full scale of this project in relationship to these people, my eyes were opened and I saw the potential of a permanent negative impact on the neighborhood. It was irrefutable. I moved to Beckett because there's no place like it. Not quite any place like it. And places like this are rare. They, they don't exist anymore. I know change is inevitable and I'm not against budding businesses and environmentally responsible development in Beckett. However, introducing this particular three-hundred-plus-million-dollar glamping resort on County Road will permanently change the character of the neighborhood and will most certainly profoundly negatively impact, have a negative impact on the quality of life for close neighbors. To deny that is unfair and irresponsible. As much as I want to see the Dreamaway sell, as much as I love Daniel and value our friendship, I cannot in good conscience support this proposal at this scale on this road. I had the impression at the last town meeting that perhaps some of the members of the planning board had already made up their mind. I was surprised when I learned that since that last meeting, the select board had already written a letter to the planning board in support of this project. I find this troubling. A decision like this must be made with careful scrutiny. Input from neutral experts, not those hired by the developer, and certainly not fully hearing the concerns of the people.
I don't know what happened.
I don't know what's.
Tell the other people in the room to shut off their, their thing. Don't have two going at the same time.
I don't have.
You cannot have multiple devices going on.
I don't have multiple device going on in my place.
You don't, but other people on the, other people listening in do. And they're, and they're not muted, okay?
Testing, one, two, three, testing.
We can hear you now, man.
We can hear you fine. Keep going.
Hello?
Hello? Okay. Where was I?
Neutral impact.
Yeah.
Neutral something.
Thank you. A decision like this must be made with careful scrutiny. Input from neutral experts, not those hired by the developer, and certainly not before fully hearing the concerns of the people who will be most impacted on a daily basis. To approve this proposal without deep consideration is reckless and will have irrevocable consequences. I hope the planning board will proceed with appropriate circumspection before approving such a massive change for the County Road residents. I am puzzled by what I hear from my friends, a characterization of the lack of neighborliness that I, I keep hearing people referring to. This has not been my experience, so I might have missed something. But I have been moved by the number of thoughtful, caring, intelligent, sensitive people I've met in my neighborhood and on County Road, from longtime Beckett residents to second homeowners and newcomers, all whom are looking carefully at this plan, doing research at their own cost, and raising valid, reasonable concerns for our environment, our neighborhood, and the people who live here. I ask the members of the planning board to resist casting all opposition as vitriolic and combative, a monolith full of nothing but hyperbole and misinformation, and to take the concerns of the people of the town seriously. The people in opposition, including the over five hundred who have signed that petition, are a group of individuals who have a wide range of concerns for our neighborhood. This project at this scale is wrong for so many different reasons. And the concerns of the close neighbors on County Road, of which I am one in particular, need to be respectfully addressed and taken into account. I ask you to please put yourself in our shoes and consider in good conscience how you would vote if after years of investing in your quiet Beckett lifestyle, a thirty-million-dollar glamping resort were being proposed for right next door or across the road from your property or just down the road from your house. How would you feel? Thank you for hearing me.
Well, thank you very much. The only thing I would like to say that I disagree with, and I don't know where you're hearing it from. This board has had no discussion whatsoever about this facility outside of this meeting. So if you're hearing from somebody that the board has already made up their mind, I think you're solely mistaken. And I think that that's for everybody. That's why we're here today. That's why we're sitting. We're all volunteers. All right, we don't get paid for this. We, we're here to listen to your concerns and everybody else's concerns about this project, whether it takes one meeting, two meetings, or ten. Please understand that we're here for the people of Beckett. All right, next on the list.
Piscopo is back and he's got his hand up. I'm not sure if he's got his technical difficulties figured out.
Who was that?
Pat Crispo.
Pat Piscopo, you got your hand up. Are you ready to speak? Pat, we can't hear you. You're not, you're, you're muted your cell phone. We can talk to you offline about this.
It looks like he's unmuted. It looks like he's unmuted.
All right, Patty, you're unmuted. Are you ready to speak? Speak.
He doesn't have a strong enough internet there, I don't think.
All right, well, guess what? Okay, we're gonna, Pat, we'll get to you. You can always talk to us during the week and we'll schedule, we'll schedule you at the next, at the next meeting. All right, the next person on the list is Brian Horan. Brian, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Address.
So I'm an attorney with Kane Hibbert and Myers, which represents the concerned residents of Beckett. The address for that nonprofit corporation is 715 Yocum Pond Road in Beckett. Chairman and members of the board, thank you. Based on the remarks made during this hearing, we understand that the plan will be amended and that the community will have an opportunity to comment on the amended plan. So I would like, whether the plan is amended or not, I'd like to reserve my comments until later on in the hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will move on to the next individual, which is Lydia Rosner. Lydia, are you there? Hello, Lydia.
I think I heard someone.
I am here. Yep, I am here and I did speak at the last.
Hello, hello, Lydia spoke at the last meeting.
Okay, Lydia, we're going to, since you spoke at the last meeting, thank you for being honest. And we'll move on to Josh Rosner. Josh, are you there?
I am here, but I too will reserve my comments until after the application has been refiled.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Robinson, are you there? Martin. Oh, please don't be.
Yes, I am.
Martin, okay, we got you, okay? Address and can you, are you ready to speak?
Yeah, yeah, I sure am.
Robinson.
Robert.
Okay, Robertson.
Hello, board and members. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I live at 1004 County Road. And my main, there's been so, so much, so much good information that's been said tonight from all the interested parties. And our, our, our main thing is that I don't, I don't really understand how, how this, this glamping project has even been even considered to begin with, because just by the sheer zoning law alone, it, it baffles me that the size and scope of this project, because I live on County Road. And it, it really doesn't make sense that such a, a large project could even be considered by, by the town to begin with, so. And now, and now we sit here, you know, facing, you know, having lived here for probably fifteen years, having a, a project up here, almost like a small city being built right down, half mile down the road from me. And now we're going to have to deal and change our whole life for the sake of some, well, I don't want to batten up anybody, but some billionaire to come dump thirty million dollars up the road because they feel it necessary. And basically what it's going to do, just, not just for me, but for all people in Beckett and especially the people on County Road, is to change our way of life that, that, that we, we more than cherish. And, and it, when it, when it comes to like, like the season like now, May to like, say, October, November, there isn't a better, there isn't a prettier place on this planet. And now I have to, actually have to consider that someone's going to come here and make this, not really like, going to make, turn this into like a business road. And, and, and it just, it just doesn't, it really kind of baffles my mind that this, this, this project is even under consideration. So my wife and I were like, sitting here going, if, if this project ever did go through, we don't want to live here anymore. And we've, we've, we've invested our entire life, not just ourselves, but all of our neighbors. And we are like, I think we're all getting to realize, people, the more we talk about this, is that this, this project is, is beyond the scope. I mean, if it was a lot smaller, I mean, you wouldn't have such opposition as you do now. But this project on the scale that it is, is enormous. I'm a contractor. And this is like building a small city down the road from me with a hundred sixty-five, you know, I've been on projects this size or bigger, and this is going to destroy this mountain. I mean, you can't even imagine. So I really, I mean, there's so much, there's been so much, so many good facts and figures that everybody has presented to you before I, I, I had the chance to speak. So I'm really not going to go down the road of like the traffic and stuff, because that's, all these things that, that you're hearing are, are, are just the tip of the iceberg of what, what is really wrong about this project. So rather than me kind of go over and regurgitate the same things, I mean, by me living on this road especially, not, not just, not the only road that's going to be affected, but we are mostly, that our way of life up here will never be the same. So I really hope that the board considers that this proposal, it needs to be looked at very, very carefully, like everyone before me has said. You know, you need a lot of studies, especially the traffic. And my God, the, the, the safety, the fire, the safety is another issue of having fires right down the road from me. And I know what it's like up here in the summertime. But I mean, I just really hope and pray that you guys take a really long, hard look at what they're really proposing here for just the sake of a few dollars, because you have a lot of faithful taxpayers that have, that have invested their time for this, for the, basically, I call it the sanctuary where I live. This, this place is awesome. And, and for you to, and for us, for this, somebody from the outside to come in here and to stick this project in here, th- this place will never be the same. And, and basically, that's, that's all I'm going to say, rather than go over the same issues that everyone has brought up. And, and plus, every time that we hear that they're changing the, the proposal, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like me that the, the HTR has gone down the road. Every time that someone says something, oh, they're going to amend the proposal. They're going to amend the proposal. Well, obviously that they didn't think about everything they're doing until they keep hearing all the negativity. They keep changing to make it, to make it fit. And that, I'm a contractor. I get it. And, and to me, that's, that's just, they, they didn't fully go down the road the right way and, 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 and propose something that exactly what's going to be built. And by, and I've been in commercial construction my whole life too. So it's kind of like, you know, they just want to, they just want to get their foot in the door. And then from there, game on, they're going to build whatever they want. I've, I've seen it happen so many times. So I really do hope that you guys on the board take your time to really analyze this and, and put your thinking caps on to think what, how really, how big this really is. And I really appreciate your time, but it, it, it would just change our life to a point where I really don't want to be here anymore. And, and I hope you guys really consider that. And I thank you for the time.
Well, thank you very much, Martin.
You're welcome.
I'm going to move on to Samuel Rapkin.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have, I have a point of order, maybe. I don't know whether it's out of order or not. But it seems to me if, if a lot of people are putting their, their comments on hold based on waiting for the amended application, that maybe we should table this, this hearing until we get the new and updated application.
Well, I think, I, it's, yeah. Well, I don't know. I don't know. What does the board think?
They've taken the time and.
They've taken the time and the effort to come and speak, Howard.
All right.
And it has been withdrawn. It has not been withdrawn. It's still before the board.
That's correct. Okay. And you know, as far as, as far as the application is concerned, you know, the board's, the board's hands are tied. When people put in an application before the planning board, we don't have the, we don't have the authority to basically turn around and say, no, 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 we're not going to hear that application. All right. It is up to the individual to present the plan. And we've had lots and lots of plans. I've been on the board for almost twenty years. There have been lots and lots of, of plans that have come in and weren't perfect to begin with. And so we pay, we take, you know, we've never had anything where we've had as many people concerned. I think the last, the last activities before I was on the board was when Labrie came into town and wanted to take the quarry and convert the quarry into an, from an inactive quarry, an abandoned quarry to an active site where they were going to mine the, the tailings and rock out of the quarry. And then we're going to build an asphalt plant up there. And that was rejected. And, you know, that meeting, I attended some of those meetings and there were a hundred, there were a hundred people there. It was a physical meeting, not like a virtual meeting like we're having today. And that was, that was almost thirty years ago.
Well, it just seemed to me that a lot of people are going to want to respeak after.
No, you know, the ones who are speaking are, until the ones who have decided to not speak, all right, are basically going to speak at a, at a later date, all right?
All right. So be it.
The next person on the agenda on, on my list is Samuel Rapkin. Samuel, are you there? Is it Sam or Samuel?
Samuel.
Sam.
Sam, okay. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Sam Rapkin. I've had a residence at 715 Yocum Pond Road for forty years. I appreciate the opportunity to address the HTR application for a special permit. I am opposed to the proposed glamping resort complex. I'm not going to take your time speaking about traffic since I think that's been thoroughly covered. I do have three points I'd like to make. First, it's not a camp. It's a real estate development through HRT, which is funded by investors, including to some significant extent, the multi-billion-dollar Davis Corporation. The supposed camp is a resort complex for one, over one hundred sites on forty-eight-plus acres, half of which are for tents on the edges of the complex and half of which are manufactured buildings of some sort, all of which apparently will have their own toilet facilities, sinks, electricity, and heat. Making up a word for marketing purposes, the lamping, whatever that may be, the resort complex is not a camp or camping. Second, the impact of the resort complex on the neighborhood, particularly the residents of County Road, will be disastrous. It is the least neighborly thing that the town of Beckett and its residents could do to them. The value of their homes will plummet. No one will want to live on or buy a home on an approach road to a one-hundred-plus-unit resort complex. Beckett may gain some additional tax dollars from HTR, but lose it from the decrease in the real estate value of homes in the neighborhood and at the price of. And at the price of selling out a neighborhood and Beckett's recreational resources. Particularly the trails access off Yocum Pond Road, Buckley Dunton Reservoir and Yocum Pond. Third, there isn't an emotional appeal to the resurrection of the Dream Away Lodge. However, it is foolhardy to believe that a national real estate corporation. Can or will achieve that dream. The H R T application is silent about the funds that will be committed for the Dream Away Lodge and for its operation. To conclude, the supposed benefits promoted in the H T R application for the resort complex. Are far outweighed by adverse effects that it will impose in the neighborhood in which it would would be placed. And on all residents of the town of Beckett. H T R has not satisfied the requirements for a special permit to be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, that was very well stated. All right, next, uh, Mark Hoffman, M D. Mark, are you there?
I am. Chairman Ronzio and members of the planning board, thank you for allowing me to speak. You have already heard cogent and compelling presentations regarding the rationale for rejecting this project outright. Uh, my wife Deborah and I want to add our voices in solid opposition to this project. We stand in solidarity with the residents of County Road.
Sorry.
So address, I I'm sorry, like everybody else, fifty-six Frederick Port Road in Beckett.
Frederick?
Frederick.
Frederick, yes, we stand in solidarity with the residents of County Road. Whose lives will be irrevocably shattered by the presence of this. That very, their very eloquent voices should be a major, major impulse for this planning board to consider. Uh, completely rejecting this proposal, these are neighbors, these are residents of Beckett, these are friends. These are people that we know, these are people we see at at uh, you know, the Y, you know, the grocery store. So I really think beyond the conceptual issues that have been raised and then in the logistical issues. I think we should really focus on what it means to the real residents of Beckett. And not the employees and not the purveyors of real estate ventures. Uh, thank you very much, my wife has also submitted a letter to this regard with regard to her objections and one more thing is. When we drive down Beckett Road, which is on our way to our home. There's intermittent pockets of garbage, there's uh bottles and I don't see these being picked up, imagine this multiplied a thousandfold when you have. Cars coming in, just one way in which it's gonna stress the infrastructure of this town, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Uh, thank you, sir, and thank you, that we thank your wife for sending in the letter. Um, the next up is uh Ju- uh Julie Shanahan. Julie, are you there?
I saw Shannon.
She was here earlier.
Yeah, I saw her.
Here she is.
There she is, okay, Julie, are you ready? Just give us your address first, please.
Uh, Julie Shanahan on twelve twenty County Road, I live right next door to Dennis, right next door to the Dream Away. And I had all these things planned to say and everybody already did a much better job than I would have on most of these topics. So I'm going to give you more of the emotional side. Uh, Beckett, I've been born and raised in Berkshire County, lived here all my life. Beckett means the world to us, we love where we live. I'm a veterinarian, I do wildlife rehab, um, very, very much in touch with the wildlife, with the woods, with nature. And this is just been devastating news, um, I. I agree with Marty, if this goes through, my first impulse is to sell, I don't wanna live here. This will destroy everything that we've come to love. My daughter and I love going to the lakes, we love going for walks in the woods. We bring bags with us to pick up the trash because there's so much in the woods, especially when COVID hit and everybody filtered into the forest. Uh, that was a little devastating, but but this is very emotional for us because, yes, the traffic is a problem. Safety is a really big concern for myself, being a single mom. We've had issues because of the Dream Away, we've had people drunk stagger up our driveway. Um, this stuff's not gonna change, it's gonna get a hundred times worse if four hundred people are down the road because you know they're gonna be drinking, they're gonna be partying. They're going to be in the woods, they're probably gonna be setting off fires. Because they're not allowed to have campfires in their spot, so they're gonna go into the woods, say, oh, isn't this a cute place, we'll have a campfire. And now the whole forest is on fire and how fast do you think that the fire department's gonna get up here? I don't think very fast. The other thing is the wildlife, uh, like I said, I do wildlife rehab, but the wildlife is gonna be destroyed. The absolute beauty is going to be gone, we raise bees. Someone raised the the idea of the pesticides, I didn't even think of that before, but the pesticides will kill the bees, I mean. These are all factors that the reason we're here is because these are the things we love and we don't want it to go away. And if this comes in, everything that we've come to love is just destroyed, so please, please, take this into consideration and deny this permit. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you, Julie, and uh that was a good presentation. Um, Louis, Louis Pofkin.
Yes, hi, good evening, thank you, thank you Chairman Ronzio and thank you planning board for allowing me to speak to you guys. I've lived in Beckett for twenty-nine years and I've been and I live at one six, yes, 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 one sixty-two County Road. Next to Mister LaFogg's family.
That's true.
I have lived in Beckett for twenty-nine years and I've been a homeowner and taxpayer for twenty-eight years. I love Beckett. When Daniel bought the Dream Away, I loved what he did with the place, he carried on a tradition at the scale. And um at a size that was manageable and respected the environment. When I heard he sold it, I figured, oh, another similar business. Boy, did my eyes pop when I heard it was a mega project. And I also wanna thank um my neighbors who spoke before me. Um, who have shared many of the things that I'm concerned about, I'm gonna just touch about, touch upon one or two. When I first moved to Beckett, I had to have a well installed and Chris from Seska or his brother installed well for me, a a pump. Bill Bill came, I asked him, why is it so expensive? He said, you have Artesian deep wa- well water, it's a hundred and sixty feet down. It made me think when learning about this project, where does my water come from? Is it the same water that I love, is the same water that my neighbor enjoys? That Beckett has, that um the Dream Away also uses, the same source of water? So I feel a project of this scale could certainly impact this. I'm doing my due diligence, I've reached out to U S Geological Society, who's pointed me to the New England Water Center. So that I can learn and be a better resident to understand what the heck is going on. Similarly, I thought about, gosh, I've been a homeowner thirty years, all I hear is about Title V and septic. What do four hundred people need? Is it a four hundred septic systems or a mini waste water treatment center? I'm concerned that with that many people comes that much waste. How will it be managed? How will it be treated? How will it impact the pristine, amazing water that I love? How will it affect the groundwater and the neighbors? Can people still farm? What will happen to October State Forest? Very, very concerned about this project and its scale and what it could mean for the water and other things like wastewater. You know, people talked about the night sky and other things, I'm not gonna really talk about that. I just wanna close and I don't know if this is the place to ask it. When I moved here, there was a yield sign at County Road and Yocum Pond Road. It's disappeared, I don't know if it got hit or removed. I yield out of habit from doing it for thirty years, I can't tell you how many times I almost get rear ended because I'm yielding to something that isn't there. If this isn't the place, could someone just tell me how I could request to have the yield sign put back because?
Highway Department.
Highway Department.
Highway Department, if you talk to the town administrator.
Ed Picker.
Thank you.
Ed Picker is the highway superintendent.
Okay, perfect, I will do so because, yes, you know, the traffic that will come is of concern. The traffic that's already here speeds along and it's it's of concern to me, so in closing. I'm against this project in its magnitude, I believe there's sustainable, appropriate size business that can help keep the town chugging along. I'm all for that. A mega project that could ruin our quality of life and the esprit of the neighborhood, not for it. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you very much, sir. All right, well, let's move on to Dan Davidson.
Davison.
Yes.
Not Davidson, Davis.
Davison, Davison, with O D, okay, Davison.
Yes, thank you, uh, my name is David Davison, our house is on fifteen Wishing Way at the corner of Yocum Pond Road. Mister Chairman, members of the board, thank you for letting me speak this evening. Forty years ago, my wife's parents, now passed, built a house. Right here in Beckett and they love this place like nothing else on the planet and it now is in the hands of their children. And we live within a short walk of both the pond and Buckley Dunten Reservoir, we just love being up here. Our children grew up visiting their grandparents here and now our grandchildren are coming to visit us. So we're into, I guess that makes the fourth generation. And my my lady-in-law supported the town of Beckett in every way, whether it was the fire department, the art center, um, the land trust. They were very generous. This lamping project, obviously, it's been already stated clearly, too much traffic volume on roads not built to handle it. That it it's just obvious, if you know the, if you know the neighborhood, you know that, you don't need it explained. These are dangerous conditions for children, adults and grandparents like me. This traffic study was clearly inadequate. Please vote no on this, I ask that the planning board do that in the end. And I thank you very much for listening, my wife Emily and our entire family, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, Anne Kong, are you there?
I don't think she was able to log in.
All right, but I have David Kong.
Yeah, they were separate.
They were separate, so I, we can listen to David and we can also listen to Anne if we both wanna speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
There he is.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir, very well.
Good evening, uh Chairman Ronzio and good evening neighbors, I'm so happy that everyone's up here tonight. I live at eight oh nine County Road and uh. We visited friends here for three decades before deciding eight years ago. To invest and plan our retirement in this beautiful serene neighborhood. And it's often been known as the Thoreau, the Thoreau's Walden Pond of Berkshires. We live at the crest of County Road where you would, it's a blind rise and you can't see the oncoming traffic. All the vehicles coming up the road has to accelerate very hard and very loudly to make it up the hill. And all too often, we see people swerving and not slowing down. And there were many a close calls of accidents right at the crest of this hill. This is, you take two hundred more plus vehicles doing multiple drives. Back and forth every single day during the the three seasons and. The safety of the local residents, the walkers, the joggers, the bicyclists and the wildlife, I've seen deers get hit out here in front of my lawn. It's a disaster, it's an absolute disaster waiting to happen. It's gonna be hundreds of vehicles and people all day, all night long traveling this road at the pitch black darkness. Coming up this road and it's inevitable that there's gonna be alcohol involved in any of these accidents or marijuana being smoked. It's a recipe for tragedy. Tragedy that that I don't think studies could really find right now, uh, the the results of. H T R, it, they claim it's a a campground, but if it's walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. It's a resort, it's a motel development. The traffic safety issue, I don't wanna go back into, everybody said it very clearly, I just wanted to make that point about. This particular hill right here, when you've traveled it, you understand what it is, it's a blind hill, it's a blind rise. Especially when the sun is rising at six o'clock, when most guests and visitors are traveling to come up to have dinner. Uh, down at Dream Away, it's very, very dangerous. And uh, the other point I want like to talk about is the uh, the strain on law enforcement and the fire department. You know, they claim that, oh, it's not gonna be a big strain, yes, it would be. I've spoken to the fire, uh, uh, the police department and 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 they said it, absolutely, even one call. Is one call more than that they have now that's straining their resources. And and was there a really a financial analysis of what the uh, the income that would be generated? From this kind of a development, you know, in comparison to what the cost would be for road repairs and extra law enforcement? And extra fire department personnel, I know it's a volunteer, but when you come to a scale of this size. You can't have a volunteer fire department, you have to put people full time in the in that position. And I, you know, and and as well, I have to, I have to ask the questions, you know, the the questions, very, very serious questions. Uh, it was brought up uh by Julie, forest fires, you know, the prevailing winds come from the west. If there was and and we all know how dry the underbrush is of the, you know, area in the forest over here. If there was ever a forest fire with the prevailing west Canadian winds blowing across. All the homes on County Road are in the path of this tremendous fire. That the volunteer fire department of Beckett is completely unable to handle. They would not be able to handle it, it would be a complete out of control forest fire. You can have far fire trucks from three towns and what, how are they gonna travel down this road, it's a two-lane road.
You can, you can shut me, you can shut me off at this point if you need to, planning board.
Yeah, you could shut him off. Uh.
The homeowner?
I have, I have one, I have a a few, just two more points. In the H T C development uh proposal or the their application. They quoted in in fire uh plans for this project, two sentences, two sentences. Discuss proposed plan with the town fire chief to develop an adequate fire access plan, period. The new lodge building is proposed to be finished with a sprinkler system and a fire department connection. Now, is that the, is that the degree of what they submitted? To the town's planning board to make a decision on when they have a full page about. Lighting, about, you know, uh, you know, who knows how many pages in that document about sewer. Fire is fire safety is. Upmost importance, utmost importance. And uh, the municipal impact report lacks any defined facts about any emergency studies. That need to be done or or that has been done and if there is, where are they? Why didn't they present, why why doesn't, why don't they present from the fire department? And and the last question I beg to ask is, who is the the person that they had these discussions with? Was it a former fire chief or the current fire chief? And and that makes a very important distinction because it questions the the validity. Of the of the discussions to begin with. I suggest that we have the fire chief come and explain if, you know, if whatever plans they have. In case there's a fire in my backyard, in my front driveway over here, running up the hill, what are they gonna do? What's the plan? There's nothing in it, thank you, thank you Chairman Ronzio, thank you board members. This is outrageous, this whole plan is outrageous, that's all I can say, it's outrageous.
I found Anne Kong on the list.
Yes, hi, this is Anne, uh, thank you, um, I I thank you for letting me speak. I'd like to defer my comments until after the resubmission of a new application, if that's okay.
Okay, we'll defer them.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is Mary Ann Adams.
Hi, thank. Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you very much. I would like to, sorry. Thank you, I would.
Somebody's.
I would like to also defer my comments until we have a new application. Um, I want to have, for a point of order, I want to ask if, when there's a new application, do, do the, um, registered commenters get reset, or do we continue, um, with the list that we've had already?
So what we're gonna do is, you know.
I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna.
I'm just wondering.
I'm just on.
It's a new application.
I'm looking for a point of order about whether or not.
If they submit a new.
Have a new application, all the people who've spoken. Put that on the list, or whether we just have not spoken, and then go back to those who would like to amend their comments.
Audio on?
Um, the rule is, is that, and the rule I've set forth is that everyone will get a chance to speak. All right, and once they've spoken, um, and we get back, and we get back.
Should be good. Can you hear me now?
I can't, I can't talk over people talking to me. So either mute yourself.
All right.
Let me answer the question, or I'm moving on to the next person.
Okay, can you hear me?
It'll be hard to, okay.
Can I, can I finish what I had, what I, what I'm starting to say? Thank you. All right. If they withdraw the application, it's up to the board to make a decision as to whether they would withdraw with or without prejudice. That's, that's a decision that we, we have not arrived at, and we will not arrive at until we've taken all the input from the people who are here and the people who, um, have not had a chance to speak. You know, it's now eight, eight oh five, we've got another half hour or so of testimony that we can take. Um, and if we stop testimony at that point, then I will move to, uh, um.
Continue.
Well, we can move to continue the hearing until, until a date time certain, which will be the next, which will be next month, all right? Um, and that's what we'll do, all right? The, as far as, if the, if the, if after we've heard what you've said and we want to uh, talk to the applicant, we'll talk to the applicant about, um, maybe adjusting the plan based on what we've heard so far. And then everybody will, will start afresh, okay? Um, yes.
Why don't we get that answer from the attorney? That was a question that really we should just get his opinion.
What, what, what?
Whether or not these people who have already spoken in regard to this application, if there's a change in the applicants and the application, do they have the right?
They will have a right. No, we don't need an attorney. They will have a right to come back and, 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 and speak again if the application is changed. If the application is not changed, then we'll hold with the rules that we currently have. And we'll, we'll, you know, once we've, once we've accepted, uh, all the public input that's coming in, we will then close the public hearing, and if the, uh, if the applicant decides, uh, before they, before we close the public hearing, we'll ask the applicant if he wants to do anything about changing the, uh, uh, changing the application, and if he does, then he can submit the, the changes that he's got, and then we'll start the process again by taking public input. Um, if he decides that he's not gonna change the plan, then we'll end the discussion, end public discussion, and we will move into the decision-making phase. The decision-making phase can last up to ninety days, all right? And that's what, that's what happened on the last application we had. We have, uh, we have a long time to, to make it, to render a decision. Those are the rules. Those are the state, those are state, state rules that we need to follow. So I'm gonna move on to the next person, who happens to be Will Rogers. Will, are you there?
It's star six to unmute yourself. I think it's started.
Give your address.
Hello.
Hi, Will.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Will Rogers, and I don't want to make the mistake of telling you my address, because my address is six sixty-eight County Road in Beckett, Mass. Um, I happen to be in the town of Beckett, uh, or the surrounding area for about seventy-five years now. And I happen to be a Vietnam veteran, and, um, I almost got killed over in Vietnam for this country on more than one occasion. Uh, however, I'm lucky to be alive and be able to survive here on my street. Um, I bought this property at six sixty-eight County Road in nineteen seventy-one. And, uh, about nineteen eighty-seven, I cut some trees down here, and I built my house out of the trees that were on my property, because I milled them into lumber, and I built my house out of the trees around my property. However, I got a lot of sentimental value to my property here. I own about twenty-eight acres of property on County Road. Um, I, um, like I say, I, I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I've had to try and survive in this, uh, country. And, uh, approximately three hundred and ten thousand of us committed suicide when we came back to this country. But however, um, I'm still alive, and I'm very glad and very thankful that I am alive. Um, however, um, I would like to let you know that I think nineteen fifty-six was the first time I stepped foot into the Dreamway Lodge with my father and mother. Um, however, um, I want to have peace and quiet, if I can get mostly peace and quiet, um, on this street, um, to some extent, anyway. And, um, I, um, well, some of the people in town of Beckett here, some of the highway fellows, uh, call me the mayor, but, uh, I'm not the mayor yet. However, um, I especially thank you for letting me speak here and tell you my piece, what I, what I think. Um, and, um, I, I just would like to see, uh, this project not be, uh, voted on to be put into our town of Beckett at all. And, uh, I was a fireman for the town of Beckett for about thirty-eight years of my life, and I've served uh, some certain things in the town. I was a Boy Scout, and I got up to be an Eagle Scout in the town of Beckett here. And Mr. William Aliberta, who was a good friend of mine here, and he's one of our selectmen. Um, I, I've known him for almost as many years as I've been in the town. Um, however, all that being said, I do want to make this kind of short, and I want to pray to God that this thing does not be accepted into our peaceful and wonderful community. And I hope and pray that, that our select people and our planning board does not want this thing to be in our town. And I think that's about enough said.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Can we, can we try?
You're very welcome.
Can, can we try Pat Crisbo again? He went off, I think maybe he.
Yeah, we can try that. Pat, Chris, uh, Crisbo, are you home? Are you there? Can you hear us?
Unmute yourself, uh.
You need to unmute yourself.
There you go. Try that. Nope, hit it again.
Hello, I think we can hear you.
That's going to start tonight, I'm telling you.
Who was that?
All right, well, we can't hear him. Okay, uh, up in the top left-hand corner, we have Heather. Manello.
Yes, you want to ask him if he wants to call in? Maybe that would be easier.
Pat, you want to try calling in instead of, uh, on your computer? There was instructions for calling, maybe try calling in instead, and we can get you back on.
I would love to have Mr. Crisbo speak, as he is only the fourth member that I've recognized on this opposition.
Does he have a, does he have a number, or can I give him a number? I'll give him my telephone number.
He's gonna call in.
Which number?
Hey, Pat, I bet you Pat can hear me. Pat, we gotta get this resolved, so you can speak, buddy.
Why don't you give him your telephone?
Hey, Pat, here's a telephone number to call. Area code four one three two eight one six three nine six. I'm waiting for your call. Oh, no one else will hear.
Put him on speaker.
I'm gonna call her.
Yeah, got him.
Put him on speaker.
I will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, we got you, Pat. All right, you're on speakerphone.
Can you come over there?
I'm gonna have to move my phone closer.
Okay. Actually, try, I appreciate that.
Put it next to this.
You know, put it right next to the, okay, go ahead, Pat.
Okay.
Good idea.
I live at four forty-five County Road in Beckett. I'm about two hundred and fifty feet from the crossroad between Yocum Pond Road and County Road. It's approximately, it's two point four seconds when you come around the corner at that intersection and get to my driveway, which is on, on the side that is headed toward Route Eight. So I am unfortunately living proof that I can avoid accidents, because I've been almost hit a number of times coming out of my driveway. Like I said, it takes two point four seconds to get to my driveway from the crossroads. I shudder to think what's gonna happen when you have this kind of increase in traffic. I've been lucky in the, in the last several years. I'm wondering if that luck is gonna hold out. That's one of my, one of my main concerns. My other concerns is the excessive traffic problems. I noticed, for example, that there's less carnage on the road because of the pandemic. I'm a big animal lover. I'm concerned about the wildlife being placed jeopardy. I also want to call attention to something that, that seems to be obvious, but I'll state the obvious. And I put this in a presentation, which I've submitted to the planning board. There's over five hundred and forty-seven people who signed a petition. And the relevant grid that, that applies to this traffic problem, that's well more than half the residents. That is an overwhelming statement as to the sentiment of this town, as to how they feel about this clamping or whatever they wish to characterize it. It's really something to be looked at, because the welfare and the concerns of the citizens of our count, of our town are really, should be taken into consideration. This outburst and this outcry of tremendous opposition, in and of itself is significant to possibly reject this particular plan, this particular plan by HTR. Ms. Lifton and, and, and Mr. Zwick and a number of other people, Julie Shadow has spoken from the heart. They captured a lot of my own sentiments, so I will, I will reserve it, but I put it in writing, and I thank the planning board for making it happen to try to connect me. I feel that I'm now part, above part of the planning board meeting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, you're welcome, okay? And we do, we, we're not gonna exclude anybody. Thank, thank you for taking my number, okay? You can call me anytime.
You're doll. Thank you very much, generosity.
All right.
And all the planning board members, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we need to move on to Heather Manello. Heather, are you there? I'm sure you can hear me.
Yes, Chairman, I'm here.
All right, can I need an address, please?
Yes, sir, it's Heather Manello of three two three five Main Street, the former Beckett General Store, which is now known as the Route Eight Pub. You know, I would like to thank the chairman for being here today, and I'm sorry for this excruciating redundancy from the butters and the people who are outside of that spectrum. Um, the only thing I can tell you is that I know five families that spoke tonight, and I'd like to speak in, in, in behalf of support of the glamping, the glamp ground. Um, I hope this doesn't affect, uh, the people in the area to come in and patronize our facility, but I have to be honest with you that there are five families that spoke tonight who know me very, very well. Uh, Will Rogers, Paula and Kenny, Ms. Rosner, um, even, even the last, uh, Mr. Lewis, who, Lewis is great. However, I would like to read directly from what I wrote to the planning board. I'm gonna keep this very short. And I'm, I'm, that too, because it is very redundant, and I really understand and want to respect everything that they're saying. However, comma, I would like to read from you the, the message that I sent to the planning board, if the planning board will have me.
Sure.
So I wanted to reach out in regards to the, the Dreamaway Glamp Ground story. In favor of the project, I do own the Route Eight Pub here in Beckett, formerly known as the Beckett General Store. We have several folks in support of the project and several folks in opposition. It'll bring good revenue streams to the small local businesses like mine. My fear is that a small group of people who do not live here full-time or have just moved here have been, well, maybe against the glamp ground because of a campaign cause. Typically, the people that we, I and my husband are people who visit glamp grounds often. Typically, the people that we meet that come to the glamp grounds are local people who thrive in the opportunity to be in a natural environment. That these areas that we visit, my husband and I, are located next to state parks or state forests. The people that we've met at these campgrounds enjoy the forest and the local amenities and also respect them. I'm not speaking from a place of inexperience. My husband and I often take our motorcycles out all the way to Virginia. And recently, we've gone to, uh, Devil's Fork Park in Virginia. It took us eighteen miles from the highway to get to these places. We did not notice much traffic. In fact, we really enjoyed our time there. The campground was full. We frequented the boat launch. We, uh, rented a boat. We took it out. We went around the lake. We really enjoyed the amenities, and a lot of the people in glamp grounds aren't the same as people in regular campgrounds. They're not up and down your streets, smoking marijuana and, you know, raising havoc. In fact, they had a local restaurant at the glamp ground that we went to in Virginia just three weeks ago. And we stayed mostly on the property. Um, we really enjoyed the quiet neighborhood. We respected the quiet neighborhood, and the folks that we met respected the same thing as well. Many businesses like mine struggle to make ends meet year-round. It's one of the amenities in Beckett that most of those folks that we knew moved here because they actually had something to go to, like the Dreamaway Lodge, the Route Eight Pub, po- possibly Papa Bob's, or even, you know, some of the other Otis amenities. I personally think that it was, it, it, it is a good thing that the glamp ground is what's going to take over the Dreamaway Lodge, as I have been accustomed to the police department responding to drunken drivers. Uh, most of the people who attend glamp grounds do not drink heavily, that they, they particularly care about the forest. Um, you know, I'm into the Beckett Planning Board pretty deep. I've had several special permits issued to me as a trustee member of the community. Um, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I would like to bring to light a few things that, that were brought to light today, and I know I'm gonna run out of time, so I'm just gonna hit them very quickly. Um, there are a lot of good points about potential contingencies, which I think could be a democratic solution. Um, I do not feel as if that the traffic study is valid and should be redone, because my experience and my husband and my husband's experience, we've been to over twelve glamp grounds in the last ten years. Most of them have been on windy country roads. We did not notice an increase of traffic. We were the only people on the road. Uh, we did not walk down the roads, because we were spending our time in the state forest. And we also did go to a few amenities, like the local watering hole like mine. Um, we went to a couple other places, and, uh, in the community, we were very welcomed, and we did ask questions, because we are in the situation where we're thinking about closing our business or selling it, because the local folks who live here, and again, I want to reiterate, only five of these families that have spoke today I've ever seen. So they come up here to have a quiet and resolute situation, but I think that the overall picture has been over-exaggerated quite a bit as far as glamp grounds go. I have seen the plans. I have looked at them. They look a lot like Campgrounds of America, which we frequent often. I have seen the plans. I have looked at them. They look a lot like Campgrounds of America which we frequent often. Daniel is a historic hero. In my opinion, he is beyond where I am and I am about to throw in the towel because the fifteen hundred residents that we have year-round just cannot support the Beckett General Store slash Route Eight Pub, neither the liquor store. Smoke detectors are required by the town, so that is a great comment and I think that's wonderful that people are bringing that up in the neighborhood. Our fire department is more than capable of handling a fire situation as long as these people are willing to work with them as I did in my facility which hosts three commercial units and three residential units. And we came up with a plan and I think that they are responsive. Ninety-nine hundred gallons of water per day is a small mark on a sixty thousand gallon per day system, especially because it's private, so I love the fact that the community is aware that there will be a water usage there, but I will tell you right now that if you do your research, if you have a special permit to have your own septic system and ninety-nine hundred gallons per day is the system, that is one tenth of what the small town of Chester does. They have leaks in their system, over sixty thousand gallons, not nine hundred and ninety. It's not, I understand where the people are coming from. Continuing on, you know, if we really want our quarry and our state parks to be funded by the federal government, we have to prove that we have people coming to them, you guys. I have been involved in town politics for forty-two years. If we cannot prove that people are using our facilities, they will stop funding us, period. Please understand, please understand, that you are not looking at the big picture. These glamp grounds typically do not allow open flames and you can put that as a contingency. There are mostly propane fires where I go and like I said, I've been to twelve over the last few years. They don't require extra police. The people who attend glamp grounds are typically environmentally aware and are attending these glamp grounds because they are environmentally conscious and they wanna take advantage of our national state forests, which we will not get state funding unless we can prove that people are taking part in them. Please do not speak ill will of the fire department of Beckett because I have personally funded, contributed, volunteered my entire life to the Beckett Fire Department, the Beckett Washington School, the municipality with their voting and catering to everything. We are not in the Hurt Locker, however, if we don't come together as a company, as a group, and realize what exactly it is that we're doing here and look at the bigger picture, there is no Beckett, you guys. I love the people of County Road. I can only attest for five of them that I know that I spoke tonight because they're not necessarily patrons of my facility. But if we cannot keep the revenue, the expendable revenue flowing in Beckett, you will see Papa Bob's go bye-bye, Route Eight Pub, which I believe me, I made it through the pandemic with not one freaking dollar. Other than my GoFundMe page, I cannot believe that I'm still open right now. I cannot believe it. And it's because there's fifteen hundred year-round residents that have very little expendable income to spend at my property. We are going to go instinct and those are some of the things that most of you have really enjoyed about the land. I cannot believe that I'm the only person that's being heard tonight in support of the glamp ground. The Dream Away Lodge could turn into anything and I think you guys should rethink what you're exactly doing here. I do not believe that the traffic is going to negatively impact the neighborhood. In fact, these people that I've been friends with for twelve years, I am a part of a community who does this. None of them are disrespectful. Okay, I'm good. I think I said everything I wanted to say and I just wanna appreciate everybody who does live on that road and I hope that if anything else, we can all come to a compromise. Thank you for hearing me and I wanna speak directly to the board tonight and say thank you very much.
Heather, I appreciate your curtailing and your remarks, okay? As far as someone speaking about the time limit, I have not yet really cut anybody off. Please, that is not your job or your responsibility, okay? So what we'll do is we'll now move on. Heather was... We have another hand raised up there on the left hand.
Chris Windlehurst?
Chris Windlehurst, Chris. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, it's Chris Windlehurst. I live at three thirty-one Cerner Road in Beckett, of course. And I specifically wanted to speak in support of the Beckett Volunteer Fire Department. I took a little umbrage to the comments of an earlier speaker that we weren't capable and we weren't gonna show up in a timely manner. So as a volunteer firefighter, I will assure all the residents of Beckett that we will come to your emergency and we will come in a timely manner. So the Beckett ambulance is not a volunteer department, it's a paid department. So I don't think that, and there was some suggestion that maybe they spoke to the previous chief and not the current chief and I am sure that they spoke with the current chief and he is a professional firefighter. And if he gave his approval, I think that's something we should give credence to. I appreciate tonight, I feel like the people who spoke, a lot of the earlier speakers had a lot of good points, a lot less hyperbole than the last time, a lot of good points. I am in support of the project, but I do understand the scale does seem a little scary. And I said, you know, early on to Daniel, I thought maybe that it was a little larger than it should be, so maybe they should think about scaling it down. And I do understand if it was, you know, being built next to my house, I might feel differently, so. But I am in support. I think it will attract people who respect nature. It's right next to sixteen thousand acres of state forest which is woefully underutilized. So I understand people's concerns. I appreciate them. But I think it's a good idea and I thank the board for their consideration. This is a tough job. You've got a long way to go yet and... But thank you for hearing me.
Alright, Chris, thank you very much. Okay.
Can we move to close?
Well, I've got, I just wanna, was there one more hand raised up there?
No.
We don't, okay.
I'm sorry, it's Josh Rosner. May I just ask a very quick question?
Nice, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's Josh Rosner, ninety-five Rosner Lane, and the question is just a simple question in terms of the filing. It's somewhat unclear what the ongoing financial relationship between the seller and the developer is. Is that something that will be fleshed out in the new application?
Is there no application? Everyone keeps talking about a new one.
Yeah, we're not even close to a new application, okay? As far as the financial arrangements, we can ask that question of the developer. I'm not quite sure, you know, in the past, we have had situations where the owner of the property entered into an agreement that they didn't take possession of the property unless the project went forward. So I don't know what the actual financial arrangements are. Does anybody remember? Alright, we'll get that answer for you, okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we've got a few other items that we've got to deal with.
Did Chris wanna say something else?
I think he just didn't take down the chair.
No, no, I did wanna say one more thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Earlier on, the developer or their representative had asked if they would have the opportunity to speak after all, and I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to let them weigh in at some point. We're allowing all these negative comments, but we're not allowing them to come back with any comments or rebuttal. So I'm just wondering when it's appropriate for them to be allowed to speak again.
Well, we could do that, but unfortunately, if we do that, we've got some other business and... Sorry, Regent, I'm still in the meeting. Bye. Alright. Alright, so we've got this other business that we've gotta take care of. We've got minutes that we've gotta approve and... What were the other things that we needed to do?
Are we gonna have masks, etc.?
Oh yeah, that issue has to be addressed.
So I move that...
Turn it over right now or we could wait till the next meeting. It looks like we're probably gonna have to let it go till the next meeting. And at the next meeting, what we will do is we will have, we will open with the developer addressing any of the concerns at that point in time. Is the developer there right now?
Yes, we are.
Yes, okay. Well, okay, I got a lot of different people. Jeff, when do you think you're gonna be ready to answer or come up with, you know, some kind of a statement regarding the information that you've heard so far?
We can submit comments or responses prior to the next scheduled meeting of this board. And then we'd like to make that, you know, make a brief presentation about those comments at that time.
Well, that sounds good. It's just that I don't know how quickly you'll be able to turn this around. We've got approximately thirty days before the next meeting and I usually would like to get the comments out before that so that, you know, the constituents in Beckett will have an opportunity to read them. When do you think?
I'm sorry, I was going to say if you know that date, I think we can meet the deadline to make sure that everybody has adequate time to review the remarks.
If you can get a week before, that would be fine.
Yeah, we can certainly meet that.
So that would be the first June?
For the meeting?
No, no.
No, no, the meeting is the eighth, okay?
Oh, the eighth, okay.
If you have your comments prepared, then we'll be able to get it up on the website so that people will be able to see what you have to say.
Yeah, that's absolutely... Yes, that's a fine timeframe.
And if you can get it to us sooner, then we'll take it sooner. The more time they have, the more time it's up on the website, the more time that, you know, they'll have a chance to read it.
Right.
But we'll give you the deadline of one June.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
I move that we continue this hearing till the next meeting?
That's what we're gonna do, okay? And I need, one of the things that I need to do is I need to make sure that we will send you a statement to continue this and I'm assuming that your client is willing to continue this to the next date. It has to be in writing, okay?
Yes, understood. We'll provide that.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright. So Howard, we're gonna move on to the items that we haven't addressed yet, which was board to discuss future meeting attendance requirements. And I don't, I'm gonna put that out to the board.
Do we have to vote on the fact that we're continuing this hearing?
Yeah, we do, alright.
So I made a motion. We're waiting for a second.
Okay, we have a second to that motion. The motion has been made and seconded by Al Blake, okay? I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna call for the vote. I don't think we need any more discussion. Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
James, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob Ronzio votes aye, okay, it's unanimous. The meeting is continued with date time certain, that date being June eighth at six o'clock.
Okay, it's my wife's birthday.
I need minutes to approve. I need minutes to approve. I need the minutes to approve for this.
How many people do we need to approve it? Three?
It's fine, I just, you know.
Fine, you're ready to approve. You're ready to approve.
I have things to add.
Well, we can, we'll get there, okay? Howard, are you ready to approve?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so fine. So let's, so you take off. Thank you very much, James. Alright, so the minutes. We'll go to the minutes. Alright, Ann.
Okay, yeah, alright. Let me just go page back here. First of all, on the first page and find the way...
Which one? Which one?
March twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth, okay.
Jesse, you've been doing a yeoman's job. I don't mean to be critical in any way, you know, I just wanna make everything perfect. Okay. Alright, on page one, two, A. It said that I abstained to approve the minutes of the site visit on February ninth, and that's true, but I would like added, which I think I said, the reason I abstained is that I wasn't here because I was at the doctor's office getting monoclonal injections, not for any other reason. It was purely a medical reason. I was not trying to avoid anything.
I didn't, I don't think I need to put down the exact reason.
I know, that's why I wrote that way.
You really want that in there?
Yes, because I don't want people to think that I avoided it since my vote was against it. Okay, so that is, you know, it wasn't intentional.
So, hold on, you want me to add what now?
That was a medical reason why I abstained because I wasn't here because of a medical emergency.
Okay, so... I'm gonna put a summary call in after that. Ms. Crowe had medical reasons for not being at the meeting.
Right.
The site visit, that's all.
The site visit.
The site visit. I would've wanted to go, but that was the reason.
Yeah, I wasn't there, yeah. I did say that I didn't have a family. I have not got other ones.
That's alright.
It's not a big deal. It's only in light of the fact that I was a no vote. I don't want people to think, oh, well, you see, she didn't even wanna look because, you know, we voted no. Okay, on page six.
I only got pages.
Page, I have page six of eleven.
I got page one of eleven, two of eleven.
It looks like, I think your pages got all out of order because I went to grab my, I printed these copies, you guys have them all.
Alright, okay, well, go ahead. Say, tell us which of that.
Alright, well, it's on the second paragraph. It says, my comment, one, two, three down. He doesn't think putting up a fence with plastic inserts, plastic inserts, can you see that?
And I don't think it'll be a problem, you know, mine.
So here it is. Doesn't think it's a fence. I want you to put in chain link fence.
Chain response?
Yeah, chain link fence. I'm just being clear, that's all. Okay, down at the bottom.
It's third paragraph down.
Down in the middle.
It's line one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, line seven.
And it says, she shows board pictures from the website. Can you just add the trustees' website?
The website of the trustees of reservation?
Yeah, that's right.
So that's the last sentence. I just wanna...
In that same paragraph.
Same paragraph. She thinks they should get their plans. Can you just be confirmed and such, right, Joe?
She thinks the applicants?
Yeah.
Yeah, she thinks they...
You want me to change they to the applicants?
Yeah. Alright, last sentence of that paragraph.
Same, same, same line, so the last line, yeah.
Yeah, let's see. Should be set with logs to document the level of order.
The level of order?
Timely checked.
Level of order, timely checked.
Timely checked. Okay, that was on page seven. At the top, the sentence of the... uh, the sentence on page seven of eleven. All right, I'd like to add, and if you don't like it, you can say so. They may not. And this is our sentence. Do you see where we are?
On what line are you on?
Very first line, very first line, Jesse.
I, I, I just wasn't sure where you were.
Yeah, I know. No, no, that's fine, next line.
Page seven is very bad. Okay, I would like to add, they, meaning the trustees, may have, may not have been aware of the bylaw language.
I'm not sure where you're talking about, or if you're adding this. Want, want that added up or something?
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what. They may not have been aware. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, it doesn't really make any difference whether they were aware or not.
Well, I said that, though, and then it wasn't in there. If you don't get that, fine.
I mean, it's.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about, just to be clear. I don't know what you're talking about, uh.
Where is that? Where is that?
Page seven, page eight?
Page seven.
No, it's.
Different page seven.
It's a different, yeah, it's a different page seven.
Okay, wait a minute.
The other minutes don't have page seven.
Okay, where it says, um, page seven, at, at the top of page seven that I have here, it says Dr. Lerner says that a director of order, the trustees of reservation received a notice of a, of public hearing and asked if they submitted a letter. Did you see that? Yep, okay. Ms. Crowe says it was her understanding they decided to remain neutral, but I also said they may not have been aware of the bylaw language or as a new entity in the town. I don't want them to, to, to see.
I don't think we really talked about what, you know, whether someone knows something about it.
Yeah, exactly. We can, we can.
We don't know, but, but I said it. You don't wanna put it in? Okay, that's all right. Just go, all board members. Following conditions. And we cleared this up with the conditions. But it's not in here.
The conditions were cleared up, unable to.
Yeah, right. I guess we did that. Um, let's see. Nice to see. Okay, that's all right.
Just wait, okay, so it is all in, okay, we can't forget.
Um, I think you already corrected the very end of the, um, leading minutes. Right, you sent me something after what I said.
Hey, you actually, uh, changed something, but it wasn't on your written answer, so I just wanna make clear.
If it's all in your answer, it can't be changed.
Yeah, well, I think, I know.
You put a line something that wasn't on.
I, I, I suffered that, you know, with Heather Hunt a number of years ago.
Uh, let me just say, no.
I wanted to change something, and she said, no, it's been set yet. You can't change it.
Um, I prefer, that's what I said. I'm pretty safe, I'm gonna be going. Something that conducted, you had to, oh, you added yes, okay.
Yeah, well, I, I added it in red because it wasn't in your written statement, so I really think you need to remove.
All right, and I think so.
All right, so as far as the rent is concerned, okay, um, how does the board feel? Now, Anne wants to add it in, okay, and the board, you know, if it wasn't in their statement?
I think he went, didn't go.
If it wasn't in your written statement, okay?
And I don't think I took the written statements.
Well, you attached it to the email, you said that.
Yeah, and that's on mine. You, you took what I.
I did, but I, I had to know that it wasn't in a written statement. I have to say that.
Oh.
You didn't have it put on as a written statement. I can go make a copy of it, you know?
Well, I, I, I know I said it. It might not have been in the written.
Saying it is one thing, you know, you.
All right, it's, it's the essence is there, that's fine. Uh, let's see, anything else today? So, yeah, other than that, I'm fine.
All right, uh, so will someone make a motion about approving the minutes as amended?
I move.
March twenty-fourth. Howard made a, uh, Howard made the motion.
I get it.
Um, Al seconded the motion. All right, uh, call for the vote. Um, how do you vote, Howard?
Aye.
Aye. Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anne, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Bob Ronzio votes aye. The minutes from March twenty-fourth are now approved.
And I'm just adding for the record, Gail is, uh, attending. She, uh, is abstaining, correct?
Gail, are you there? Hello?
She's there, she's up there.
Gail, you gotta unmute yourself. There you go.
I did. I'm unmuted, thank you.
You are now.
Yes, I am.
Did you abstain?
Are you voting or not?
I abstain, thank you.
You abstain? Okay, fine. Thank you very much. All right, the next meeting, set of meetings, our minutes are from April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah.
We good for that one?
Fine with me.
All right.
Second.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I make the motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-first.
All right, okay, we have a motion made. We have a second to the motion.
Second.
And, and the second's the motion, okay? Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. All right, Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Anne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob Ronzio, no, not yet. Okay, Howard Lerner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And, Gail, how do you vote?
She wasn't there.
You weren't there, okay?
She has to say it, Bob.
I am. I abstain.
Abstain, okay, fine. She abstains, all right. Um, and Bob Ronzio votes aye. The ayes have it. Motion, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. All right, so we've done the minutes, we've done the minutes. The next thing is to discuss future meeting attendance requirements. Um, I make a a plea that we do not change anything. All right, just so that everybody here knows, I keep very, I'm on the Board of Health, I'm the vice chair of the Board of Health, I keep very, very close track of what's going on, not only in the state, not only nationally, but in the state, and in particular in Berkshire County. Berkshire County is now the worst in Massachusetts as far as COVID is concerned. All right, and there are a lot of people that are sitting on this board that are immunocompromised. All right, so I strongly suggest that we continue on with a Zoom meeting under the guidance that was published by the, the governor, all right, which continues on until July fifteenth.
I moved.
We have a motion made, okay, a motion was, was made. All right, seconded?
Second.
Right, it's seconded. All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. Uh, Anne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anne votes aye. Al, how do you vote?
Aye.
Howard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Gail, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Bob Ronzio votes aye. It's unanimous. All right, we will continue on um, with Zoom meetings until, uh, at least July fifteenth. All right, so.
Can I add something?
Yes, you may.
All right, this is something that was stated at the end of the me, at the end of the meeting, which was very upsetting to me personally.
Fine.
I'm gonna read my statement because it's tight.
All right.
At the end of the meeting, after a decision was reached.
Can you speak up?
At the end of the meeting, after a decision was reached, a statement was made by Mr. Ronzio and echoed, echoed by Mr. Lerner that this was the only time there was not a unanimous decision about a matter before the planning board. That statement appeared in the Berkshire Eagle article written by Larry Parnas as follows, quote, "I don't remember any time in recent history where we have basically not rendered a unanimous decision," close quote. "I take great exception to the implication of that statement. Was it a subtle criticism of my competence because I was in the negative? Was it made to discredit my analysis of the issues and the fact that I prioritize sections of the bylaws that others did not? Was it code to intimidate me to fall in line in first and future decisions? Whatever the motivation, such a statement was unnecessary and way out of line. Again, I take exception to the implication of that statement."
Well, I'm sorry you took it that way. I didn't mean it that way, and, uh, you know, I guess, uh, when, when I spoke, I said, "In recent memory, I don't ever remember a decision that was not rendered by the planning board that was not unanimous," which is a statement of fact, okay? It had nothing to do with you and, 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 uh, you voting negatively. It's, it was a fact, okay? Um, I, I, everybody on this board has every right to vote the way they need to vote, okay? And, you know, the motion still carried without your vote. It, it wasn't, you know, it was, it wasn't that, uh, well, I didn't mean.
I take, I take that, that, like what you say. I know, I, I felt that it shouldn't have been said, but, and been calming down afterwards. So I know you didn't mean it in a negative way.
I never meant it in a negative way. It's just that.
But it shouldn't have been highlighted.
Okay, you know, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize if it was taken in a negative way, okay? It's not, it was not meant direct to be directed at you in particular, okay? You're an independent person. You have every right to, to render a decision that, uh, or, or make a recommendation, um, you know, as you see fit. And we have, we have, we have denied applications. Um, even when we denied the application for convoy, we all voted no, okay? But it was a unanimous decision. All right, you know, I mean.
There might be in the future.
There may be in the future, other decisions.
All together.
Right.
And that's okay.
It is okay.
I just wanna make that as a statement of fact.
Well, I.
It's probably very unusual that every decision is unanimous.
That's true.
It is. That's, that, that was the point that I was trying to make. It was really, it's, it's really, it's, it's unusual for, for any boards to make continuous unanimous decisions, either for or ne, or for or against.
It's two hands up, man, that's for sure.
Um, yeah, you wanna, um.
Oh, we're taking public input next.
Are we, uh, is Anne finished?
Anne's finished. Do you wanna speak, Howard?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think any of us were casting aspersions on you personally, Anne. It was just, as chairman of two other boards, it's always, it's always disappointing when there's not yet, in, yet.
Unanimity.
Unanimity, because I, I chair two other boards and, and I always try to hammer it out so that everybody, there's a consensus, and it's just, it wasn't casting aspersions on you. It's just as chair, I think Bob was just making that point.
Okay, I'll accept that.
All right.
All right, so we have two hands raised. Um, we have a few minutes left.
Leanne Ellis?
All right, and, uh, there's, uh, there's, uh, I guess, who, who are they, okay?
Uh, Leanne Ellis and Laurie Friedman have their hands up.
Well, I just clarify, this is not pertaining to the applicant. This is just pertaining to public input outside of the other discussion.
Right.
Right, yeah, yep. All right, uh, we'll start with Leanne Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me speak. Um, I know it's a late hour, and I am, uh, wanted to speak about the fact about the tran, potential transfer of, um, FDD, uh, FFD MA Enterprises Inc., um, MA Inc., um, special permit to Himalayan High. Um, quite succinctly, section six point eight point five, parentheses two, and parentheses, says, "Special permit shall only be valid by use for the, by the applicant and will become null and void upon the sale or transfer of the license of an ME or Medical Marijuana Treatment Center or change of address, uh, change of location of the business." So I believe that statement says that the special permit cannot be transferred to Himalayan High. And if you so decide that it is transferable, I would like to know why and what your reasoning is based on. Thank you.
Okay, um, the, uh, first of all, they have not been, the license has not been issued. Uh, the, the planning board does not issue licenses. All right, the select board does issue licenses, uh, for things like alcoholic beverages, okay? Um, as far as the planning board is concerned, there was no, since there were no, there was no license issued, all right, uh, that that paragraph does not apply.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Chair, and why does it not apply? Because the, it's basically states that a special permit in the marijuana field or for an ME is only valid for the applicant. In this case, Ipswich Pharmaceuticals then became FFD Enterprises MA Inc., and they transferred it from one, um, company to another, and what was in common was Benjamin Sacks was, uh, partner in both. However, uh, how can Himalayan High operate at twenty-seven, twenty-seven Jacob's Ladder Road without a special permit? And how is that transferable from one entity to another? That has nothing in common with it.
Well, um, hang on, and I will get you an answer, okay? This is under Mass General Law, chapter forty A, se- section zoning, section one A, under definitions. Transfers of developmental rights, the process of which the owner of a parcel may convey developmental rights, extinguish those rights on the first parcel, and the owner of another parcel may obtain and exercise those rights in addition to developmental rights already existing on the second parcel, right? Uh, the board may vote to suspend any of these rules upon concurrence of four out of five board members. These rules may be amended by, this is in our own rules. These rules may be amended by a majority vote of the members of the planning board, providing that such amendment shall be presented in writing at a regular meeting and action taken thereof at a subsequent, uh, regular meeting, all right? That's, um, in the case of special permits, it says, uh, this is special permits, a two-year deadline from the date of granting a permit shall apply. These deadlines can be altered, uh, as a condition of, as a, as a condition of the special permit. Reasonable extensions of time may be granted by the board in case of an appeal to Superior Court or for other good cause, okay? And basically, it's, it's, it's up to the board to make a decision, and the board can either render a formal decision, or we can just act on this, uh, act on this because um, they have the ability to, to transfer the license, okay? Uh, previous, uh, I'll go on further. Amending a special permit, a previous, uh, permit granted may be amended by a written request of the board on the board's own motion. The board may amend, may determine whether any request for changes of a special permit constitutes a minor amendment, or such a request should be considered, or should, should then consider a new application requiring a public hearing. The board may amend the permit without new, without a new public hearing, provided it finds uh, that the amendment is not significantly, is not significant to the public interest and is consistent with the purpose of the intent to the bylaw. And that's, and I, and I, you know, if I have to, I'll call, I'll call the board to, uh, you know, basically vote on this, okay? As far as, as far as the time limit is concerned, which you haven't asked about, um, but I did see in your, in your letter, right, um, I will honestly have to tell you that, uh, there was an error made uh, in when the, when the permit actually runs out, okay? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer you to, um, I gave that to you now, okay? Uh, this is a, this is an act of the state legislature, okay, Acts of two thousand and twenty, chapter fifty-three, signed by the governor, okay? And it states in section seventeen, how you, how you count out the days, okay? And if you, uh, if you want, we'll, we'll provide you with a copy. It's, it's gonna be difficult reading, uh, but when you, uh, when you do the calculations, it turns out that this permit expires, um, on September tenth. out that this permit expires, um, on September tenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. You guys have it amended, in such a manner, and the governor basically allowed, in, in the act that was provided in the Acts of two thousand and twenty, under chapter fifty-three, it allows you to extend that, that deadline out.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to, um, ask that the vote, the board vote on the transfer then.
Fine.
Um, thank you.
We can do that. We can do that, all right, I mean, I don't have all the, I don't have the members all here, so I can't do it tonight, right, I'll call a special meeting to, to, to do just that.
Thank you very much.
The board, if the board is, if the board feels that it's necessary, it's not up to her to make, to make that, she can make that request, it's up to the board to decide whether we need to do that or not.
I don't think it's necessary.
You don't think it's necessary, what do you think?
Well, from what you read, it's, uh, it's not really necessary.
Not necessary, okay? Howard, how do you feel?
Concur with the other members of the board.
All right, concur with the other members of the board. Um, okay, well then, uh, that, they have it, Leanne.
It was a good question, but we.
It was a good question, you had good questions in your letter, um, I did do the research, all right, and, uh, you know, originally, I was looking at a different section, I was looking at section seventeen and se, and section nine of the, uh, of the zoning act, which is forty-eight, and, uh, I thought we, I thought it would be addressed there, but it was later on, doing some legal research, that we came up with, uh, chapter fifty-three of the Acts of two thousand and twenty, and I can provide you with a copy of that.
Thank you.
All right, so the board has decided to, uh, not amend the special permit, that means the, uh, the, um, just so that everybody knows, the, uh, select board at its last meeting did, um, approve the, uh, host community agreement, um, with Tetrahydro, it was signed by the board, and it was signed by the board.
Himalayan High.
Huh?
Himalayan High.
Himalayan High, I'm sorry, transferring it from Fine Federal to Himalaya High, and, uh, the select board did approve that, they signed the document, the document, it was actually signed by the town administrator, it was sent to, um, Himalaya High, it was signed by, by Good Enough from Himalaya High, and it was also signed by, um, Ben Zacks from, uh, Fine Federal. So that document is now in the hands of the town secretary, who will produce, who will, uh, um, put it before, or she'll give it to the town administrator. And, uh, it will, um, be brought up at the next meeting, I mean, it's, it's a fait accompli, they've signed it, they just have to approve the minutes of that particular meeting. So, that pretty much makes that issue resolve, as far as, oh, and one of the, one of the things in counting the number of days, okay, what I didn't do is that, um, there, you know, the fifth day would, from the time the permit was issued to, um, issued to, uh, yeah. Ipswich Pharmaceutical, all right? It was issued on, it was, uh, it was, uh, approved on January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, but there was fifteen days, the appeal was filed on February sixth, so you have to subtract or add, subtract out those fifteen days because they counted towards the two-year limit at the time. And then the appeal lasted a hundred and forty-nine days, so you had to add back the hundred and forty-nine days to the two-year period. And then, of course, you have the, uh, the Act of two thousand and, uh, twenty, chapter fifty-three, um, which extended it from March tenth, two thousand, to January fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, so you add in four hundred and sixty-two days, and that gives you the total, and that brings you out to, uh, from January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, to September tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, that's the new expiration date. So, um, if you guys want a copy of that, I have there, a copy of that.
Yeah, we have one more person who has, uh, um, public input, I think.
Okay, all right, who was that, who was that person? I can't read.
Laurie Friedman.
Laurie Friedman, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Chairman, I just have a quick question, I, I know that, um, Himalaya, Himalayan High is considered a prioritized applicant because it's a veteran-owned business, but I'm just curious how you know that this is a veteran-owned business?
By, by, um, one of the applicants, okay, I understand there were four principals, but my good enough is in fact a veteran, all right? And he stayed, he stated that on his own, I mean, I haven't actually looked at his ID card, but he probably doesn't have one, I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to have a, I, I'm a veteran, okay? Uh, I carry a blue ID card, but that's because I'm a retired veteran, okay? There are plenty of people, like earlier tonight, you heard, uh, Will Rogers talk about his, uh, his.
In Vietnam.
Orances as, uh, you know.
Well, isn't that up to the CCC to verify?
Right, and that's up to the CCC to actually verify that when they, when they, when they make that application. I also understand that one of the other individuals is also a minority in that he is, uh, Hispanic, and Hispanics also qualify, as do women, as, uh, you know, um, as, uh, as one minority candidate, so, okay, and so the, uh, the correct term is, um, oh, what is it? I can't think, all right, I lost my train of thought. It's equity, and equity, they're, they're all part of the equity program, okay? That's, that, and if you go, if you go to the CCC site, all right, and you, you type in equity programs, you'll find the information there that will outline exactly who qualifies and who doesn't qualify. And so when the applications get, uh, get to the CCC, they will, they will do a background check on all the individuals.
So that's when they, that's when it will be verified about the veteran status through the CCC, it won't be just somebody's word for it?
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. All right, do we have any other qu, any other public input?
Move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to move to adjourn, all right, Howard, we only went ten minutes over, all right?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, well, you made the motion, okay, who's seconding it? Seconded by Al, okay? Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the, I'm going to call for a vote. All right, Al votes aye, Howard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Howard votes aye, Ann, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and Bob Ronzio votes aye, the meeting is adjourned, I will see you all.
How about Gail?
Hi.
Gail, Gail, I keep, I'm sorry, hi, Gail.
It's okay, I vote aye, aye, bye.
Aye, thank you very much, all right?
Good night, everybody.